Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the business portion of our meeting tonight. If everyone would stand as they are able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in this world, with justice for all.
Okay, all members are present. Director Atkinson is joining us virtually tonight. So first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So made.
By Director Johnson, second by Director Bullion. Is there any discussion or questions? And once again, this week it will require a roll call, so we'll start with Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Excuse me.
But you forgot my name.
I tell you didn't. Director Franz.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
And Director Atkinson.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. Sorry about that. Next on the agenda is new business. The 25-26 Board Committee rosters for the Finance and Operations Committee. And Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair White, Board of Directors. This evening you have one of our three Board Committee rosters before you. The other two will be coming on September 8th. Just for some context, for the Board and for the community, as we were in transition with leadership this summer, carrying over from last spring, there was some information and processes that I wanted to make sure that we addressed before it comes to the Board to ensure that we have all the accuracy, you know, before it comes back to the Board. And so I want to thank our committees who have been doing work around the other two committees that will be coming on September 8th, but I just wanted to kind of cross the Ts and dot the Is with the teams. And getting our schedules aligned was a little bit more challenging, so I apologize for that last-minute redact, but we'll be bringing that on September 8th. We have plenty of time. Committees don't start, I think, until the end of September, the very first part of, or middle of October. So that will be coming on the 8th. I also, just in this committee space, wanted to share that, as you all know, we went through some transitions with regards to our achievement and integration efforts by reducing the administrative costs and moving some of that FTE into direct student-facing FTE that we'll be bringing onboard to support our students, to accelerate gap closure strategies, et cetera. Additionally, the Equity Committee, I shared last week with the group, as we talked with new administration coming on, we had lots of conversations about how this work needs to be embedded into the district's fabric. One of the things that I talked a lot about, you know, with our previous director as well. And so we are rolling a lot of that work that we have typically done with A&amp;I into our Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee. That has the same composition of community, staff members, administration, board representatives as well. And I just want to publicly thank our members who are part of our Equity Advisory Council. And just from a sheer human capital standpoint, the bandwidth for us being limited, I need to make sure that a lot of our work, not just within A&amp;I, but a lot of our work as an administrative team, they have heard me share, we'll be leveraging our Board Committee structures in a far greater capacity this year than we ever have because this, these will be kind of our clearinghouses, if you will, to bring in multiple perspectives versus having a lot of subcommittees or task forces that many of us who are stretched onto many of these places can consolidate our time and really focus in on a broadened scope but aligned to the work. So for example, the work that we talk about tonight, I'll introduce a little bit about what that would look like with our consolidation and closure plans, how we'll be leveraging the committees to support that work as we move forward as well. So just wanted to give some context to the Board and to our community around some of the committee structures moving forward.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the committee roster for Finance and Operations as submitted?
So made.
By Director Mason, second.
Second.
By Director Johnson. Any questions or discussion on anything that Dr. Thomas presented?
I have a question.
Mary.
How many people did we get to apply this time to the Finance Committee and how many open positions did we have?
We didn't have actually any open positions in the committee when we closed down last year. The opened positions that we have on the Finance Committee is, that took place about a month ago, when we decided to open up to a Finance/Operations. And so we added operational, people with operational experience that we did not necessarily have specifically, so there was no openings, but we expanded the committee to include Operations in about, was that four or?
We ended up with six.
Five, six, okay, six.
And we had applications of around 25.
Twenty-five and you chose six. What was the criteria for the choosing, if I may ask?
Well, largely around whether or not they had experience or background in the area of Operations, trying to vary that as well as we looked at things, taking a look also at kind of the coverage we have currently with our schools and making sure we're staying kind of balanced in that regard as well.
It's because I know that we didn't, we had a Finance Charter, but we never had the Operations Charter with that criteria, so I wasn't sure if it was, you know, how that process was done, if the process was documented or anything like that.
The same process that we use for the Finance Committee and others as well. The one thing I caveat I'll share is that I do plan to bring some revised charters back. I'll be working with some of the groups on September 8th as well, including the Finance and Operations Charter to bring some clarity around some language, to codify some processes so it's pretty well-known about some of the expectations that we have around this, these committees. I'll just share, these committees are a two-way street. We have staff who give of their time, we have community that give of their time, and we want to make sure that those who are committed in saying yes to this are able to do so in a manner that's actually adding value versus just a name on our roster. And so those are some of the things that we also want to tighten up. So thanks for that reminder, Director Franz, for me to share. I will be seeking to revise some of those charters to bring before the Board for your consideration. That way we have a little bit more clarity in what that will, what that ask is of the community and obviously the staff members.
Anything else? All right, hearing none. Once again, this will be a roll call. Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director Franz.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
And Director Atkinson.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. All right, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the business portion of our meeting so we can move into study session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So made.
By Director Franz, second.
Second.
By Director Bullion. All in favor, Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director Franz.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
And aye, that carries a seven zero, and we are now adjourned into our study session. All right, first on the agenda for the study session is the public forum. This is a 15-minute period of time for the Board to receive citizen input. Please be reminded that there's a three-minute time limit per speaker, and tonight we have one. Lindsay Waltman.
Good evening, members of the School Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lindsay Waltman, and I'm here to talk about a program that has the potential to create lasting positive change for our students. It's called Girls on the Run. Girls on the Run is an after-school program for third through fifth grade girls that aims to inspire, to discover, build, and grow their self-confidence regardless of their ability or background. The program focuses on helping girls develop essential life skills such as managing their emotions, fostering life skills, and managing their friendships and expressing empathy. But it's not just about emotional growth. Girls on the Run also encourages physical activity. Through the combination of running, fun exercises, and group discussions, girls experience the benefits of teamwork persistence and goal-setting. As the season progresses, the girls work towards two key milestones: completing a Community Impact Project and participating in a 5K event. The Community Impact Project is completed as a team and allows the girls to contribute to their local community in a meaningful way, whether it's organizing a charity event, volunteering, or finding a creative way to address a community need. This project teaches the girls the value of giving back and shows them that their actions can have a positive impact on the world around them. It instills a sense of purpose and responsibility, which is an important life lesson that extends beyond the program. Last year's group of girls crafted fleece blankets for McKenna Crossing nursing home residents and made bookmarks to brighten their day. At the culmination of the program, the girls take part in a 5K event, a celebration of all the hard work they've put into the season. This event is not just about running a race, it's about achieving a personal goal. The 5K provides a tangible, physical representation of their progress. So many of our girls from last season reported feeling an immense sense of pride and accomplishment when they crossed the finish line. The program is structured around volunteer coaches who lead fun, engaging lessons. This season, the Girls on the Run program is being held at Jeffers Pond Elementary after-school from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays, with the final 5K event on Sunday, November 9th at the Minnesota State Fairgrounds. While the program's only current location in our district is Jeffers Pond, this program's open to any girls in the district in third through fifth grade. Please see the Community Education Catalog for more information on how to register for this program, or feel free to contact me directly. I'm currently the site liaison for the Jeffers Pond Girls on the Run program. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Girls on the Run is so much fun!
Thank you, girls.
Thank you.
And boy, little boy.
All right, next on the agenda is the purpose and agenda. Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair White, Board of Directors. As with all of our study sessions, this is our opportunity to go a little deeper into topics of discussion. This evening we'll have a proclamation, we'll do some budget updates for the Board, we'll also share our initial framing of our district consolidation and boundary changes, and then close with the Board's opportunity to engage in some goal-setting.
All right, thank you. And first would be the proclamation. I believe, Dr. Thomas, you're going to read that in a little forever.
Yes, I am. Thank you. And I send my hellos on behalf of Rob Cothran, who is fulfilling his civic duty on jury duty. What's the luck that you would start a new role and then you also have to now report for jury duty? So he sends his regards and his apologies, but he couldn't join us this evening. So I just, it's for our Payroll Appreciation Week, and I'll just share that I think everybody likes to get paid for the work that they do. And we have two amazing payroll staff members here in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. And on behalf of all of our employees, I would like to thank our Senior Payroll Specialist, Jen Farquaad, and Payroll Specialist Samantha Gray for all of their tremendous time and effort that they put in every day to ensure that all of our payroll functions go smoothly throughout the year here in the district. Jen and Sam process over 40,000 pay transactions each and every year, and I again just want to thank the two of them for their dedication to the PLSAS community and recognize them for Payroll Appreciation Week.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is the budget update. We'll start with the audit update. Director Ryder.
Thank you. We're in the process of completing our 2024-25 School District Audit, and the fieldwork has, that is onsite, has been completed. There may be some visits yet with the principal partner, for example, on a couple of matters. And we are working on a few areas yet as we continue moving along, though, pretty well.
Any questions or, for Lisa? Okay, we'll move on to the levy certification update.
Okay, so I entered today our levy information for the levy certification process. As a reminder, this timeline is that we submit our information, and then on or around September 8th is when the state must then disperse out to all the school districts their levy certification sheets. And that's about a 35 to 40-page document that has a bunch of formulas in it, and from that is what is derived, the amount of dollars that a school district would receive for levy purposes from their taxpayers related to school funding. The information at this point in time is estimates that we're entering for data that they're going to use that in determining our levy for the 2026-2027 school year, and it would be the payable 26 taxes for our community that would be in calendar 2026.
Any questions for Lisa?
I have one question. Our tax estimate, or the property tax estimates, that's one of the prerequisites for this, for the people to like not, to have the, all the final issues with anybody's estimated property tax also resolved before they actually complete the formulas or before they actually give you the rate?
So there's a timing where there's like an adjustment period?
Right.
And that can take up to two years for those adjustments to work their way through the system? So, you know, taxpayers have a certain deadlines for which they can make, you know, appeals to their taxes. If we have information that's, like, we're putting in estimates right now, and so the actuals are what we're putting in for the 25-year that we're just wrapping up, and then any changes from those actuals compared to what we put in for estimates two years ago, those then would show up in the levy process moving forward as adjustments. So there's always kind of a rolling factor to the taxes, yes.
Okay, that's what, kind of what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
So sorry for the garbled question.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, well, thank you.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the enrollment update. Dr. Ryder.
All right, so we have an enrollment update for kindergarten that you see in your packet, very similar to what you've seen in the past. I've updated it for the latest week. And just to remind people of how this works, I'm making a comparison to where we were in each of the previous years at this time during those years as well. And then we take a look at what is the average percentage of how far along were they when we compared it to what the actual numbers were? And so you can see that at this point in time, we would anticipate being around 99% there, and our numbers are showing then a 528 for our kindergarten. In our enrollment projections, we have 533, so we're a little bit behind there. You just never know who's going to come in that last week before and even during the early weeks of September, right? So we encourage all families to certainly enroll their students, those eligible for kindergarten, and we look forward to serving all of our kids.
All right, thank you. Questions? Okay.
Just, sorry, just to confirm, so that 533 enrollment projection is what we used for budgeting, correct?
Yep, that's right.
And then what is the number of open enrolled versus in district out of the 523 currently? Do you have that handy?
Open and rule, sorry, say that again?
Just, I was just curious, like, in district versus open enrolled students out of that 523?
At this point in time, they're all showing that they have a place, like, they're assigned somewhere.
Okay, but we don't have this one.
Yeah, okay. I don't know that I have the numbers as to, like, who's outside of our resident district. I don't know if that's the intent. I'd have to follow up because it didn't look like it was from before, but that's something I can research.
Anyone else? All right, and then moving down to the 25-26 budget update.
So our budget at this point in time of the year is largely due to enrollment information that we want to, you know, make sure we're updating for the incoming year. And so we've already set that budget back in June. Now the challenge is for us to see kind of where our October numbers come in. And I say October because students will start their school year, and then there is a period of time in which they may, there may be some drops. Students that we may have enlisted on our enrollment at this point in time from previous years, that may have moved or something of that nature throughout the summer, right? We'll learn that they're not here when they haven't attended 15 days in a row, for example. Oftentimes they'll call and let us know, but in the cases where that's not the case, that's when we have to then drop them per state statute from our enrollment. So we kind of want to wait and see what those numbers look like after that because that really does firm up your enrollment numbers, and then you can kind of see how you're doing on a grade level in comparison to what we had budgeted, for example, and kind of get a sense of where we're at with regard to the enrollment for the current year.
Okay. Questions or comments? All right, thank you, Lisa. Next on the agenda is the first go-around with the district boundary change. And Directors Powers and Ryder will be presenting.
So this evening, we have the beginnings of a process for our School District Boundary Discussion. And as we go through this, our goal is to use this PowerPoint or some slide similarities for any presentations we do. So this is where all of the information could be found at any given time. As we move into this, the first page we want to talk about, the slide, is, it's really about the why. Why are we doing this? What's our current reality? And this is all part of a guiding change document that you can see enclosed in the slides later, that we will, we have included, so you can see all three of these first three slides together. But the why. So in response to the Board-approved site consolidation decision, Westwood Elementary will close as a neighborhood school and will house Lola Delago relocating from Greenwood. The intent is to also close and sell the District Service Center with staff relocating to Greenwood. And the need to redraw our elementary attendance boundaries is the why. There are certain things we will not do. Next slide. We will not want to violate any laws or policies, clearly. We want to make sure that we are not creating unreasonable inequities within our buildings or our programs, or significantly increasing our transportation costs. We want to be considerate of our non-contiguous boundaries that we now have and continue that process. And we want to also be watching our capacities of our buildings to make sure that we are not exceeding those in any way. We will be using the capacities that we have seen discussed in the May and June conversations around this to date. And then lastly is our desired results. Like, what are we really shooting for here? And I say desired results because this is going to be something that you probably can't accomplish every one of these on a list, but this is our, these are our goals. So as a result of this process, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools seeks to balance our enrollment across our elementary schools, support the relocation and growth of the Lola Delago in its new home at Westwood, minimize our disruption to students, families, and staff as much as we can, ensure equitable access to programs, and that can mean a lot of different things, so trying to keep that all in mind and considering the feedback we hear from others. Reviewing our efficiencies for transportation will be a part of our consideration, maintaining early childhood programming at our Edgewood School, and nature-based programs at Jeffers Pond. We're going to keep that final cohort of fifth-grade Sage students together at Westwood for the 26-27 school year, and ensuring a thoughtful transition that remains, maintains that continuity of service, and also just considering an opt-in for transportation needs at the high school, something just to consider. Our process for this to date, so up to this point, you know, we have a timeline that is included here and we'll be going through in a moment. We will have assumptions that Dan will talk about, along with minimal criteria, and that'll take us through tonight. And then from beyond this point, then you can anticipate that feedback opportunity from our Board of Education Committees that we have in place. We will anticipate creating four options to present to learning leaders and to bring to the, to the Board for conversation, and narrow that down to no more than two options to present to the Board with a recommendation of which one, which one of those options we recommend. So our timeline, this is a piece of the timeline taking us through the rest of this month here, and even to September 9th, which is our first Finance and Operations Committee where we will talk about boundaries. We will be reviewing boundaries that we have, we have developed in our process, and as Dan will talk about them, we'll further rank those as we move forward. So I will turn it over to Dan.
Good evening, everyone. Couple of things we wanted to start with when we were doing the discussion about the boundary changes, the assumptions of the process. We're assuming that we're going to keep Lola Delago as an entire program, and it's moving to Westwood. We're assuming that we're keeping the Sage kids at Westwood. We're using the data based off of last year's information because that's the most complete data we have. It's including all of our free and reduced students, all of our, pick a category for a student that's been identified. It might be race, it might be a number of different things. We're going to use all of that data so that we can try and find the best balance that we can for all of our locations. One of the things in here that we mentioned is the grandfathering of our IDT students for this next current year. Part of the reason we're talking about no grandfathering, the boundaries will change. People's preferences very likely may change, and if they had an IDT before, they, it may not be valid anymore. So we wanted to start, just everyone being on the same footing, they're going to start in their homeschool, and then they're going to have to, if they are, if they have an IDT of some type, a transfer of some type, they're going to have to apply for it over again, and then we can process that through our normal process that we already do. And after all of that, I mean, our students are the ones that are going to be settled in first, then the open enrolled kids are going to be able to come in and do this. Some of the minimal criteria we're going to be looking at, I'm already looking at, contiguous, contiguous boundaries. I don't want a piece here, a piece there, I want them to be as chunked up as we possibly can. We want to make sure that we're meeting our capacities, that we're underneath our maximums, obviously. I mean, I don't see any reason that, that shouldn't be a problem with the numbers I'm looking at right now. We want to make sure that we have four sections per grade, per building, minimum. We're basing our capacities off of four grades of kindergarten in each one of our locations. Now, there are a couple of other grade levels that have the capacity to go five sections, but that's not what we're basing all of this on. It's on the first base of the four per grade level. And we want to make sure that we're ensuring equitable access to these programs. We are, we have a statute that we have to maintain within 20% variation, any school versus our district numbers. And we can't significantly increase the cost of transportation. I'm hoping that when we're done with this process that we will find ways to decrease that transportation cost, but that's not a guarantee until I know I'm through with all of this. Now, as we're looking at developing and comparing those scenarios, all of those things that we would like are going to help us to rank these. They could all meet a minimum, and they might all be ones at that point, but there's going to be one of them that's going to fit better. It's going to have, allow us to keep that nature-based program at Jeffers Pond perfectly. That'll be a nice one, that, you know, where we, we're scaling it at an eight or a seven or however we scale that one. Those ones that meet most of our criteria, those wants and needs, those are the ones that are going to rank the highest, and those are the ones we'll bring forward to you. The ones that don't meet all of those needs, you probably, you won't even see. I can bring them and show them to you, but it won't be, at that point, you'll understand why they weren't our preferred ones. Now, this is the, the initial sheet that we were talking about for our guiding changes. These are the first three slides that we looked at in the initial part. If there's any variation between them, that's our fault, as we were switching them back and forth. And this is the full time, or a more complete timeline through, through when we want to make sure that we're done with this process. We want to give our families enough time to, when they're starting to bring in those kindergartners for next year, that we're hitting those timelines, and they can do that without worry. And that gives us a lot of other things that we need to get done, like making sure where our staff is going to go after we've redone these boundaries. Once we settle the staff, then there's, I mean, there's a whole bunch of different things that absolutely have to fall in place after this timeline is completed. So that's part of the reason that it's so truncated. Are there any questions about any of that stuff up to now?
Questions?
The only question, oh, sorry, the only question that I had is, if you could tell me more on the opt-in for transportation needs at the high school, like, considering an opt-in, can you just tell me more about that?
I can. And we And, and we actually met with the bus company today and it may not be something that'll be coming forward. The reason we thought about it initially was Lisa comes from a district where they had, they, they would reserve a spot in every one of those buses for every one of the kids. So there could be a bus that might have 20 kids in it instead of being full. Our bus company does this one better. They understand how the average load of the bus is going and they actually, they overbook those buses. They understand that they're not going to be full all of the time. So what they were explaining to us today is they book up to 150%, which allows them to be fuller so we aren't running around with those buses at 30% or whatever. So initially, when we were looking at it, we thought, okay, opt-in, that might give us some chances to reduce some of these routes. Well, we found out that our bus company is being even more efficient than that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Harry.
Well, I had a question that was going to wait till the end, but with that 150%, one of the things that that resulted in over a period of time was the bus company historically asking that kids in sports not get on the bus with their equipment, football, hockey, lacrosse, et cetera. And that kids in band, because they couldn't discriminate between which instrument, also could not get on the bus with their band instrument. So we've had that issue before with the over, overcapacity in order to balance that out. And it ended up being discriminatory towards kids whose families couldn't pick them up and drop them off and they had to bring their equipment and their band instrument or kids that couldn't practice at home because they had to leave it at school. So I, we solved it once. Hopefully, this is not going to regenerate another potential issue.
I think it's worth the conversation and making sure we keep on top of it and see exactly how it comes. There's always going to be that push and shove on maximizing one thing at the detriment of another. So I'm hoping, right at the moment, I didn't hear about as many complaints last year. They were doing the same thing last year. They've been doing the same thing for many years now.
They, they, they called it down. They allowed a lot more exceptions, especially at the middle and high school where parents are more likely also to drop off in the high school or more kids drive. So it became a little bit more diminutized. However, it has historically been an issue and I hope it doesn't re, you know, regurgitate again.
Director, it is definitely something I will be watching.
Charles.
So can you tell me more about the review transportation efficiencies, including adjustments to school start times?
So as is normal for any type of thing, when we're looking to make sure we're doing things as efficiently as we can. Right now, we have a three-tier system for going to our schools, for different pickup times. Now, if, when we redo the boundaries, that's one of the things we'll come to the bus company with is, okay, does this still work within the timeframe that we're looking at having all of the elementary kids come in without adding buses? Is this still working in the timeframe for the middles or the high school without adding those buses? If by chance I do these boundaries in a good way, maybe it could reduce the number of buses or something without changing the times. But we want to make sure that we are cognizant that some change may need to come up to make sure that we're as efficient as we can be while still serving our students as well as we can. One of the things that I know we aim for right now is that the kids aren't on the bus more than 30 minutes. I mean, that's a good thing in a lot of different ways. It's, it helps with the discipline on the buses. The, the less time the kids are on the bus, the less chance they're going to get into something. If we were to adjust things, could we probably change that to a longer? We could, but I don't know if it would be necessarily the wisest. But it's all of those types of things. We want to make sure that we're looking at all of them when we're changing these boundaries around. This is an opportunity we don't want to see come across again anytime soon. So if those types of changes present themselves, I want to make sure that we at least included it in the options and that we were looking at it.
Thank you.
I also think that it's important for us to make comment on it now as we begin the process so that people understand it's a possibility, right? Not surprise later if something's necessary.
Lisa, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question for Director Powers. Going back to the opt-in for the high school, what's the process currently if, if there's a high school student who's not taking the bus and they're driving? Because I know my son right now, he's assigned a bus, but he's probably going to be driving. So like, is there a process that parents need to know about so that they can like, like call the district and say, don't count my kid in on, on that bus stop?
Currently, there is no process. That's partly where the bus company was talking with us about where they, they actually overschedule it. If they notice that a student is not coming to a bus stop for a certain amount of time, they won't stop there. That's just a part of what they adjust if they know that kid is not going to be at that stop. But if they notice that they're not there and the parents want to follow up and say, hey, they're, they need to be picked up, that's a quick and easy change back to the way it was.
Yeah, okay, yeah. They've always been great. Is that a different percentage for elementary versus high school or?
Oh, gosh, yes. Yeah, the elementary is obviously much more consistent. They're not driving. The middle school, the same thing. The older grades, they have a slightly higher chance of having a sibling or a friend that might be driving. But the elementary is much, much smaller. The parents are the only ones that are really bringing them in at that point.
Yeah, unfortunately, they don't have to drag that tube in and out every day. They typically don't bring it home from school, so.
Mary.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to declare that my first question, other than the bus capacity, was the balance of the staff. I assume that you're going to determine the boundaries first and then look at the staff and then make adjustments. Okay, because one needed.
The staff will follow the kids. Yes. And that is a part of the discussion thankfully I don't have to worry about. But the other people are going to be jumping on as soon as we get the boundaries set.
Yeah, and that'll be part of our next iteration because obviously Rob and his team will be looking at contract language for assignments, et cetera. But again, once we know the composition of student needs in a building, then we'll know the types of staff that we'll need to bring into that building. So more to come on that once we kind of get a little further down the bound, or the reassignment process of attendance areas.
So said you will not create unreasonable inequities within buildings or across programs. I guess if you don't have the answer now, that's fine. Could you give me an example of a reasonable inequity that?
If it's within a 5% difference between the buildings in our, versus our district average of kids that need free and reduced. That is a reasonable.
It's an actual.
It's an actual percentage.
Matrix that you use.
Yeah, we have a, Chair White, we have in board, we have state statute that we have to follow with certain student populations that as we move attendance boundaries around, that there are thresholds that we have to stay within. Otherwise, we could get cited from the state as making inappropriate boundaries or further concentrating certain demographics that by law, by Minnesota state law, we're not allowed to do. If folks naturally, you know, reside in an area, that's one, that's one thing. But if we create concentrations above certain thresholds for certain student populations, then that's when the state would intervene to say, you did not follow statute. So we have some wiggle room, up to 20% in some cases. So that's the, the variance of reasonable.
Right, okay.
And, and as we're looking at this, we pulled all of the data to make sure we have our, our baseline right now. So that as we're looking at all these changes, we'll make sure that we maintain. I mean, that's where we start with the minimums so that we absolutely have to maintain within that statute limitation on all of those.
Director Powers, and I just want to reiterate something that he mentioned at the beginning, or maybe it was Director Ryder as well. So when we, when we look at our current population, we're, we're rolling that population that is currently with us this year, that they would continue next year. We know that over the summer, there will be ebbs and flows. We might get more enrollment. We might, you know, have some students move, et cetera. But we're going to use that as our base assumption, including all the demographics of students. It's not a perfect science, but that's all we can go on because we don't know who might be here next fall. We only know who's with us today. So that's one assumption. And then back to Chair White's question, we'll have to closely monitor that assumption to make sure that that kind of tracks with what we anticipate would happen so that we don't find ourselves kind of out of scope.
I have a few questions, but I wasn't sure if you were done yet.
Dig into it.
I think our next slide is just.
Just questions.
My timing is great. Okay. Hold on, I'm trying to go in order here. The, I'm so sorry. Well, the, the broader timeline toward the end there that goes beyond just tonight. We, we mentioned that we're going to get some feedback from different committees. So I just want to make sure they're not part of this timeline. So teaching and learning policy committees, meetings in the fall aren't included in this. So I just want to make sure that those get inputted.
Director Olsted, yes, those will be. At the time of creating this, we, we really managed the Finance and Ops Committee.
Makes sense, yes.
As the primary one, that we had to lock these in place. And then based upon where they fall in the queue of the TNL and the policy, then we would find ways to bring this presentation or kind of an update to get those perspectives in a timely manner. So the ideal state for us is that we're leveraging our board committees to garner community input along the way so that when we come back at our next iteration here with the board, we are bringing the voice of our community, of our staff, and in some cases, our students, if they participate in the committees. And then based upon your feedback here this evening, then we have your perspective to bring back to the community. So we become that conduit between governance and community while also incorporating our administrative voice in that process.
That was my next question in terms of getting that feedback. So we talk about this location analytics. Is that kind of ranking what other groups will follow to or is that just for, will everybody use the same format and ranking system so that it's consistent?
So that's a good question. So as we're looking at the committees, one of the things that we were hoping to do, and that may change, was when we're talking to a different committee, how does that committee, how does their work affect what, or how does their work affect the boundary decision? You know, how does, how was their input? If we're looking at just purely from a finance viewpoint, are these boundaries going to be costing us more money or less money? Or if we're looking at it from an operations standpoint, that's a very big difference. Or if there's another, the teaching and learning committees, how will it affect their, them on how we look at these boundary decisions? So all of them will be seeing the same thing that we're looking at for rankings. We will be bringing those things because the teaching and learning group will very likely look at some of the things that I've ranked, that we've ranked differently. And that's exactly what I want to hear from them so that we can get their input on, and find out exactly, okay, this really does fit the way we were thinking it did. And that's the exact hope, is that as we're ranking these, we come up with ones that fit the best.
Who, who's, who's leading the location analytics feedback? You?
I am.
Okay. I was just curious. And then, so we, we talked about student voice, which I think is going to be important. And I, I wonder, and yes, ideally, would love to have more students come to our committee meetings, but they don't. I can't speak for all committees, but I traditionally, not too many students attend those. So I just, you know, want to put it out there in the universe that I would really love to gather somehow student feedback and not count on them coming to committee meetings that they traditionally don't attend because this does, you know, affect them. And I realize, you know, a second grader might have very different opinions than a junior, say, or, you know, something like that. And high school, there's only one high school, that's an easy one. Not easy, I don't mean easy. Nothing about this is easy. But, so I just want to put that in the universe too. And then in terms of, when, when you were talking, Dr. Thomas, about, you know, meeting those statutory requirements about, you know, making sure that we're, you know, taking care of doing everything in the most balanced and equitable way possible. Is there a third, a third party? Who, who checks our work, I guess? You know what I mean? So when, when we have our recommendations or the final two even, you know, who, who checks our work to make sure like, yes, this, this makes sense for your community, this makes sense for, or these recommendations make sense?
That's a good question. And we really haven't come up with a third party to look at this.
What, the bus company though?
Well, the bus company is going to help us with routing and a few other things.
Right.
Telemetry, telemetry software, the logistical software, making sure we stay within our contractual finances. So we have that.
Yeah.
And then you have the variables of students and the concentration of students, the statutory requirements. I assume this is all built in a model anyways because this isn't the first time we've redrawn boundaries.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we have internal software that helps, you know, regulate, you know, all the movements and tracks movements and some of the analytics pieces that Director Powers mentioned. I would say also our process for leveraging committees and community as a means of checks and balances along the way. To Director Powers' point, so when we bring this information to the policy committee, for example, and again, I'm just sharing this out loud. We will bring some of the state statute that we know pertains to some of the things that we have to have look fours on and then share that with the policy committee. So through their lens of, of policy, are we adhering to law in, in policy as well? That's where we would get that feedback. At the very end of the day, if we need to confer with our general counsel on any legal concerns, particularly around the statutes, we can definitely verify that objective, more objectively. But I think we have a really good system of internal checks and balances in a, in a progressive way all throughout the, the process, taking us to November 10th. And then this is our formal touchpoints in that calendar that you referenced, Director Olsted. Obviously, there will be lots of informals. We'll have town halls. We have one-to-ones as board directors and superintendents. We might have a, a community group to say, hey, would you have the ability to come out and meet with us and talk with us? So that's something that we can certainly do similar to like what we did with the levy conversations as well. But we want to make sure that our definite go-to spaces are going to be, you know, the, the structures that we've identified here this evening, not to overexert ourselves and, and stretch ourselves so that we under, overpromise and underdeliver. I think what we have here in this calendar can be done in a, in a timely fashion as well as ensure that we remain objective on what's best based upon these assumptions and have that checks and balances.
So what isn't in here is the deadline for the final decision. So we're moving backwards from that?
It is, November 10th.
November 10th is in there?
And a latter one in the package.
Cut off, ah, the smaller one, okay. So we're moving backwards from November 10th. Part right there. One more.
Right there.
There, okay, sorry, no glasses. So we're moving backwards from November 10th. And with that, we're going to be bringing it to the bus company at some point in time and also considering the demographic changes that can happen over time so that we're smoothing it out. I would also assume that based upon my previous experience with boundary changes is that, let's say, to the policy committee would come a question of, let's say, the number of kids walking to school. Because I know that got changed and we made some variations in that. There was also other questions about where you draw the, the actual bus routes. And the first time we went through this, there was a huge discussion about the bus route being on a four-lane highway and only going on one side, therefore making kids cross the road. And therefore creating some, you know, some of these exceptions and decisions that had to go in place. Because obviously, our roads have changed quite a bit in the past 10 years. Some of them are more dangerous, some of them are less traveled, that sort of thing. So that's the type of question that would also, let's say, come to a, a policy committee or potentially the finance committee about that. And then the distribution and the demographic of the, of the students themselves would be something that would be more concentrated in the teaching and learning. Okay. Thank you.
And I said, oh, just.
Sorry, a couple more things. I was just noticing too, I think this, there is no September 23rd Finance and Operations Committee currently in calendar. I think the calendar has to be adjusted still anyways, what's online, right? They were off by a day, but, so if we need to add a meeting there.
Yeah, because we are moving dates.
Yeah, we moved them from Wednesday to Tuesday or something.
We'll follow up.
Yeah, anyway, just wanted to point it out if we can correct those. And then also, I think, you know, we spoke about ensuring that it's also brought forth to the special advisory committee as well. So for those parents to provide feedback if we could at the October 8th meeting. So for those parents to provide feedback if we could at the October 8th meeting.
And we didn't mention it, but we have included invitations on the September 9th meeting that did go out to, um, to principal representatives as well as our early learning leader. So, they'll be involved in the conversations too.
And community yet as well for their programs?
Yes, the person that's the early learning person is also the director with Joel.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would, I was just, just questioning for administration, maybe even for other members of the board. It says you're, you're creating four options. In the spirit of make sure we're thorough, the questions here about making sure that everybody is getting updated as we go, or as many, as, um, possible, I mean, is just landing on four for a reason? I, I, I see internal software doing a lot of this work. And I'm wondering, is there, are there really four distinct scenarios that are going to bubble to the top? Or we're only going to look at two anyway? I don't want to, you know, with our bandwidth issues right now, I don't want you guys to have to do work on an option that is never going to happen.
So, so if I may, Chair White, um, we would say no more than four. And to your point, yes, we do have software that allows us to, um, input various variables to see what our outcomes are, uh, potentially would be. I think what we're trying to make sure of, um, and again, some reflective lessons learned, um, uh, around other engagement topics. We've made some of those decisions in the past as an administrative team where things naturally just fell off. That might not be so apparent to our general public. So I think we may bring some of these to kind of walk through as to how or why this would naturally drop off versus just pulling it, so that people don't say, well, what are you not showing us? So I think for us, there may not be four, based upon where we do our, some of our initial inputs of variables. But I don't want to go, I mean, in, any more than four. And then, yes, when we get down to like our final realistic two, um, even there, we're going to give you our administrative recommendation and, and why one might edge out another. But I don't, we won't come to the board, um, in November with multiple scenarios. That decision point in November will be on a singular scenario that you'll have to say.
Right.
A or B. Okay.
One additional question with regards to those scenarios and the thought processes. Are these going to be placed on the website so the community can also see?
I think that would be a good idea. One of the things we were looking at was making it a PDF that could be blown up to show by neighborhood.
Yeah, so our plan is similar to what we've done in the past. We'll have the website that you saw on the very last slide that shows where families can go to get a link right here. And that's where we'll have our, our FAQs or things that we, um, discover along this journey, um, until November 10th. To Director Powers and Ryder's points, every board meeting that we have, once we start landing on some scenarios, we'll have those scenarios there. We likely won't blow up four scenarios, but we might have large images of maybe our final two, just from a cost standpoint of printing. But, um, I was trying to look around to say, but may, maybe they're a little bit smaller than these TVs here. Maybe more like this size TV right here, of those maps.
Our printed ones are just less than two feet by two and a half, three feet.
Yep.
So they, they won't be hugely large, but they can be a really good idea.
Little, little smaller than that TV there. And so we'll have those on a tripod that as families or community come into the board meetings, they can visually see that. But then you can also go onto the website and then zoom as big as you need.
I was also referring to the decision process itself. So as decisions are made, data is determined that that can kind of be put in a fact page, um, so that the community can have one-stop shopping, don't see a map, and then just start asking questions and ask the same questions. Yeah.
My goal is that it's going to be obvious as can be. Like, one of the options I had was east and west of 13. Okay, that's an easy one. The reason I picked something like that is because turning right is a lot easier for a bus than crossing against traffic and doing anything those, along those lines. So, yes, you, I want to make sure they're seeing the reasoning. And I, we can write it all down and show them exactly what the thoughts were for each one of these things.
Well, I agree with Chair White. I think that once you start putting all the data together, there's going to be one clear winner. And showing the other options are going to kind of be, you know, somewhat, I wouldn't say pointless, but it does help people understand, especially if you have the fact page, help people understand the decision process. And I think that's the most important there.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you need anything else from us? You're good, go ahead, keep doing it. Okay. The last thing on the agenda is, uh, moving toward, uh, the school board goal discussion. I sent out to you, um, results of the self-evaluation that took place, um, in the last couple of weeks. And then just a couple of, uh, indicators that, that Gail from MSBA, um, kind of said popped off the page at, at her. And I, um, only shared those as kind of conversation starters to kind of, um, you know, just begin the process of moving toward, um, some goals for the, for the coming year. I'm, I'm a less is more, if it's one or two, that's great. If the board wants to go further than that, that's certainly, um, you know, agreeable. But, um, again, just, uh, what I sent you was meant to kind of, you know, uh, jumpstart the conversation. And hopefully we can end up somewhere where we can agree on, on a couple things to work on, uh, for the next year. The hard part is making them quantifiable and measurable. That's always the difficult part when you're, when you're coming up with goals. But, uh, that's the goal tonight, is to see if we can get, land, land the plane somewhere. So, um, I guess, does anyone have anything they brought with they want to start with, or? Amy?
No, go ahead, Jessica. Yeah, no, I, I think it's, um, I think that this is a, um, very important for us as a board to set our goals and priorities so that we're aligned on what we hope to accomplish for the year and what to focus on. I would just, um, add that I would love to, I think, I agree with you, less is more, but, um, I would love to see a goal maybe around each of our priorities, um, the strat plan. So, I mean, typically with organizational planning, you start at the top with your strategy and your priorities, and you set one goal and filter that down under each. So I guess I would recommend looking at doing one goal per, per priority on the strat plan. But, um, if some of those could be consolidated, then great also.
Amy, you have something?
Um, well, I, I guess, um, my comment is just, when I looked at what you sent us, just noticing that the decrease in scores across the board from, from previous years. And so, um, I, I, I'd like to understand more. I'd just like to have a discussion around that. Like, we do have a relatively new board, you know, we have few, few new board members. But, but looking at his, the historical, what was presented, we were significantly lower in the top three areas, um, but lower in all of them. And I think, um, just having some discussion around, um, maybe, maybe it's not, uh, discuss, discussing, but it's telling the concerns. Or how do we, um, you know, when you mentioned that, um, one of the, um, topics that rose to the top was trust, um, regards to the superintendent. I mean, those things are important to, I guess, flush out, and how, how are we going to, um, set our goals so that, um, we are actually making improvements? The, the, I was just very curious on the overall decrease in scoring.
I just want to-
Mary.
For the, for the public's view, this is not the public's view of the board, this is our view of ourselves. So the, the, this is a little different than, um, um, than, um, what people may be assuming this is, as they're listening. So I just want to-
Sure.
I want to qualify that.
I appreciate that.
And I, I agree with, with Director Bullion that, um, this is a brand-new board. And, um, in some of the years that we've been comparing it to are boards that have been working together for some time. So there is a variation in cohesiveness as they learn to work together over time. So, um, to evaluate, um, yourselves, uh, at how you're working together after six months, sometimes, uh, of a four-year term, um, may require a little bit of clarification or potentially confusion or something like that. So, um, it is a little odd, we have more new members, I think, this time than we've ever had before. And then the, like you said, the juxtaposition of comparison between years can then look potentially skewed. So that's just something that, that's a variable that probably should go in, uh, and especially be com- be, you know, described to the public.
Right, I agree.
Yeah, I do appreciate the, that clarification for the public, being that this is us, um, evaluating ourselves. And the feedback is based on five different standards. I don't know if it's something, because this wasn't in the board book.
No, and they're also not putting it on the screen there for anyone to even see what we're talking about if they're listening, so.
I'm, I'm curious maybe from experience, maybe, um, how would, how would this discussion best be? I mean, is it something that we just share the five standards, um, that we're, that we're discussing to, to at least say what the, what the eval was evaluating? I mean, there were several questions, there was five standards, but there was like 70, um,
Oh, 72.
Yeah, 71 questions. And, and they all were, you know, parts of those. But, um, again, um, you know, standard one, providing responsible school district governance. Standard two, vision, um, setting and communicating high expectations for student learning with clear goals and plans for meeting those. I don't know if, if the, it's, if I should keep going and, and reading these standards, but, um, in the fact that this self-evaluation of our board team, we, we were lower than, you know, than historically have been.
Can you explain that? So like, just taking the first one, because I actually see that as being much higher than last year, right? So standard one, conduct and ethics, we have 30%, 36% always versus 24% last year. And our never went down, right, from, so I saw that, that one as a, I agree with you on two to four, but like-
I see that as a positive, right?
So how I, how I viewed it was the, the, um, yellow and the red.
Yeah, but it's still lower than last year.
No, more. There was more, um.
Looks like to me that, before I say anything, Lisa had a question that, or a comment, I'm going to make sure I don't forget.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. I was going to say the same thing. I mean, I, I think it's really important that maybe we clarify how to read this graph, because, um, you know, with standard number one, I see we made improvement. We went from always of 24% to 36%. And then like, um, Director Mason said, the eight, the red went down. So I, I think when you look at some of the other ones where the green perhaps went down, that's kind of the way I looked at it, is those may be the areas that we need to focus on. So, that's why, I just wanted to get a clarity of how you're reading this, Director Bullion, because I wasn't really understanding when you said, you thought that, um, they, they decreased when. Really understanding how you're reading it, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because it is important for us, so I'll be kind of looking through the same lens. Um, when I, when I look at the, uh, graph, I combined the some of the time and the never and the don't know. Because those are kind of like the least scored, that, you know, compared to always or most of the time. And so that's what I looked at, if that makes sense.
And so when I was, when I was looking at this, um, and I, and I agree that, that's how it can be read, and we even, we even talked about that. The, the, the very broader way to look at it is, you know, it's not like red's taken up even a very large portion of any of these. I mean, so, you know, it's not completely broken. And maybe the some of the time is, um, the some of time turns blue or green if we focus in on a couple of goals. You know, one of the things that, I don't know how Gail reads these things, she's done hundreds of them over the years, and things pop out of her, out, out of the data. And one of the things that, that, that she suggested a- as a result of reading this is, um, and, and that she noticed is that, um, what did kind of score on the lower end was the board's, um, um, idea that they're continuously monitoring the str- monitoring the strategic plan. That scored a little bit low. So she suggested that one of the ways to increase that score is to, is to focus some goals around the strategic plan to almost force us regularly to, to monitor how, not just how we're doing on our goals, but then in turn, you know, we're, we're always looking back to the plan. So, um, you know, if, if that's a starting point for us, um, you know, kind of to what Director Mason said, I don't know if it's one for each, if it's a couple. Mary.
I was just going to say that, um, you know, the strategic plan really isn't a plan, it's pillars of ideas. But if we, um, take the goals that we want to do as a board, because you remember using, for, to be clear, the MSBA has used the exact same survey for as long as I can remember. Their, their, their judging boards on, and they're asking you to ask questions or answer questions for yourself based upon the definition of a board. Not necessarily the definition of a board in your district, not necessarily the definition of board according to your strategic plan. But if we wanted to stick with the MSBA, um, questions and their pillars of area, and then use the language of the strategic plan in order to determine what our, um, what our, um, objectives would be in the following year of what we want to work, uh, look at, and what we want to do or what we want to focus on, uh, I think that would be a better way potentially of doing that, unless the board feels they, they want to change the evaluation criteria, which we do have the opportunity to do.
Sure. Lisa.
Yeah, so I think there's just, I think we're kind of looking at two different things here. I mean, this is a self-evaluation of ourself, and it's, I don't see it as being, um, comparable to setting board goals. In fact, last year, we never set board goals, and I think that-
That, that is an incorrect statement that I've already corrected multiple times, Director Atkinson.
We're going to worry about this in the coming year, so. Let's move on.
Thank you. Um, but we, we did talk about that in our retreat and how so, it's so important as a board to be able to set goals so that we are, how do you say, working together to, um, to really establish what that what, what and why is, so that administration can then execute the how. And so I think it's, I, like I said, and I like, I, if you remember correctly, like October, September, October of last year, Director Zombush brought forth, um, a picture of our strategic plan and pointed to each of the pillars. And that was like the beginning part of setting goals. And so, um, I think using our strategic plan with those four pillars, I completely support, because then we are working towards, like you said, um, Director White, of addressing what is coming up in this survey of how we can do better, which is working like, um, what Mrs. Gilman said, as far as working towards, um, you know, always holding ourselves accountable to that strategic plan.
Charles.
Director Thomas, or Dr. Thomas, sorry. I'm thinking two things at once, so, um, correct me if I'm wrong, you have a plan, um, at least coming up for the school year that yourself and/or the schools are going to have something like this already set up for, for the strategic plan. Is, is that correct?
Director Johnson, yes. We introduced a more granular version of this crosswalk that Dr. Zombush did for you all with the eight national standards.
Right.
To yours. So we get our school improvement plan framework and our department plan frameworks are completely aligned to the strat plan priority areas.
Right.
And they have to declare where their focus will be juxtaposed to the, the strat plan.
Okay, so that's what Director Atkinson's referencing, is that correct?
And I believe, uh, what Director Atkinson is referencing, and that's why I was just leaned over to Chair White to look at that document. It's a, it's a similar crosswalk to what you all have that Jay-Z did for you on a very high level.
Yep.
Yes.
So, um- So I would be, again, to echo Director Mason, Director Atkinson, taking that high-level, right, product and setting our goals at that level, I think is, and putting it towards ourselves. How do we focus in on that? A product that Jay-Z's already had and maybe curtailing it a little bit to ourselves, right? How are we going to watch those metrics? How are we going to walk into every single meeting, right, with that is on our mind and that's our number one focus, because our number one focus is our students and their success? That's where my mind goes with setting board goals is that. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, when I went and looked how this worked last year, I was trying to dig up meetings. So that's actually, I found that too and printed it. And yeah, these are, you know, characteristics that align to the priorities, right? I think it's a really good guide to setting goals, but these aren't goals, right? So, okay, just to be clear.
Those are goals.
Yep.
It's just the framework of alignment to make the plan the North Star.
So does anyone have something on their mind as a suggestion, jumping off point? I'm kind of, you know, would like, you know, by the time, go ahead.
Just to have something to bring for us, so I'm happy to kind of share and we can pick apart or whatever. But yeah, I mean, I just kind of took the approach of putting thoughts on paper, one for each of our priorities. I would love to see an academic excellence one, which I think also aligns to three of the standards on here of setting like student learning and improving academic achievement and increasing, and then doing a goal for each reading, math and science proficiency rates on average, and then like some statement to say like through consistent or monthly analysis of district metrics, so kind of leading to the dashboard, but a way to monitor that monthly or quarterly or whatever the right cadence is. So I would love to see some goal like that with, again, being measurable by subject maybe, or something like that.
So I've got a quick clarifying question, and this is going to everybody. So the evaluation is us and what we are individually going to do, not our evaluation of what we are going to direct administration to do for us.
We have to be careful.
So we have to kind of, yeah, draw the line. So what are, we, we only have control over ourselves. And so if we turn this into directing a how to administration, we're not doing this ourselves. We do that as a board, that's our, that's our goal. But this is, I think, a little bit different. This is much more personal to just the seven of us.
Right. It's not the how we're getting there, that's for them to figure out, right? But it's more, here's what we'd love to see as a district and our goals as a district and a board, and to be able to then monitor to that and say, you know, we're watching these metrics frequently and oh, we need to make an adjustment, we're not, you know, we're not seeing improvement, or we, you know, that's the type of like rigor or whatever, you know, making sure there's something on the agendas to, to just track, I guess.
So, but what are, individually, what can we do other than do what is already going to be done through the dashboard? So how would we?
Can monitor those metrics? We set a goal of what we'd like to see the district achieve, and then we monitor to that goal, and if we're not achieving it, help provide resources or direction, right, to get there.
Lisa, did you have something?
Yeah, I think it might be helpful to just add that, I mean, we really need to think of ourselves as operational oversight, right? And so if we, and I'm actually gonna reference this book, I know I gave you all a copy of it, but it's just so, it's an excellent resource when it comes to setting school board goals. And it talks about the difference between governance-oriented goals and always remembering that we, like I said, are the, we are the what and the why, and then admin is the how of executing. So for example, if we were to set a goal that all third graders, we'd like to see proficiency rates in reading increased by five percent for all third graders. Then, you know, one of the things that the book talks about is that every month, we have a standing agenda item on our school board meeting to talk about one of our four goals, whatever those goals, we determine what those goals are. So it's a checkpoint of checking in, you know, where are we at with those proficiency rates? Also, like, what's working in the schools and maybe what's not working? And then also like allocating resources to support, to support that goal. And so I think Director France, you know, you asked the question, but that's sort of how, like I said, sort of how I'm seeing it is, is that we need to have operational oversight and set clear goals so then our administration knows how to execute that. And we really, we have to trust them to, they're the experts that know what they need to do to put the proper, through your built plans or whatever, however you call them, Dr. Thomas, those different plans in place. But we have to have some concrete achievable board goals in place.
At least for me, it kind of goes back into, right, working with the superintendent, right, which is one of the things that are referenced in the email that we all said we could all do better on, right? If we've got that coming in monthly, right, and say it's one of the four main pillars, and we know we're gonna talk about it, that's something that every one of us are going to address every single month with Dr. Thomas. That just, that just seems like it's a, yes, it should always be there, but now it's, it's always on the forefront of our mind, right? It's always there, the metrics are there, you know, we're not having to dig for anything. It's, that just, it just kind of makes sense to me. I don't know if Dr. Thomas would agree with something like that. I mean, I just think it opens up, hey, are we doing the right thing? What can we do to support you, to support the district better? What do you need from us?
That kind of gets back to the core of what.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to leave that, you know, MSBA is MSBA, but you know, I had a really good conversation with Gail, and I don't want to set aside what you just spoke about that popped up was this trust issue. And I kind of like where you're going. Because we can say we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do better at trust. Well, how do you score that? How do you measure that in some meaningful way? And I kind of like where you're going with, you know, we're gonna commit to letting, you know, those three and Dr. Thomas, under Dr. Thomas, do what they believe is required to, you know, achieve the goals that Dr. Thomas is gonna set and that, you know, we all have for being the best that we can be. And I like the idea of, on a regular basis, as we meet with Dr. Thomas, to one-on-one, you know, be able to accept that feedback, because we've committed to doing things a little bit differently and, and we are gonna work on this. We are going to, we're gonna trust that you guys are doing what is required. And almost have that reverse, you know, that's what I'm looking for. The three sixty, reverse evaluation.
I like that. I think one of the goals that maybe we could do is make sure that Dr. Thomas isn't surprised at his evaluation at the end of the year, because that's on us. If he is totally surprised and he gives us that feedback of the evaluation that he gets, because we were not, we took it upon ourselves not to communicate with him, then that is something that could also rebuild trust. It's not about the score, it's about giving that feedback. So I like the way you went with that, Charles, I like that a lot. And I think we can translate that almost directly into things that we can be individually accountable for.
But if we're not setting measurable goals, you can't measure against, right? Like, he doesn't know what the expectation is. I might say, you know, and I want to see proficiency increase one percent, and Lisa says twenty, you know, I don't know. But so if we don't set those expectations and a measurable goal, then when we go review, it's not, it's subjective. Like, you know, setting that expectation for the administrative staff is so important so that they know where they stand, right, when we do go to.
We have one employee, and it's in his, it's in his job description. And if we don't feel that we're understanding that or giving him that feedback and working with him to make sure he can be successful, given the challenge that he has, that would be one way, regardless of the outcome, that's one way to improve the trust criteria that happened.
That's the hard part, trying to, trying to score that is gonna be difficult. I understand that, Lisa, before I forget.
Thank you, no, I appreciate, I think it all boils down to the board goals. I mean, to be fully aligned as a board, to have goals that align to our strategic plan, we represent our community, and we heard very loud and clear during the strategic planning process that our community is concerned about academic excellence, relevant, 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 rigorous, relevant instruction. That was one of the pillars that we heard about. And so how do we set a goal? And it has to be, it has to be a SMART goal. I mean, if you look back to the MSBA document that we're all referring to, that has to do with more how we evaluate ourself, it clearly says right on the cover, you have to set SMART goals, they have to be measurable, they have to be achievable. And so like, when we go back to the, shall we say, the proficiency rates, I mean, if we were to say that we were gonna increase our proficiency rates by five percent across the district, I mean, I think if you look at where we were at back in like 2017, we have a ways to go, right, to get back to the 2017, 2017, sixteen proficiency levels. So I personally would like to set a more aggressive goal for that, but I think we also have to be realistic, like what's achievable? I do think with all the resources that we're putting behind the READ Act this year, I think reading would be a great way to focus on setting a reading proficiency goal. I think that would be a really great way to hone in on one goal. And then, like I said, we can evaluate it, and at board meetings, we can evaluate. Another one that, another school district did a really great presentation on is around safety and security, and that kind of falls into the safe learning environments. And so I think that, like I said, I think there's a way to do this if we focus on the four pillars and just set one SMART goal for each pillar on our strategic plan, I think would be what I would like to see us move forward with.
Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair White. Just a question for the broader board, as you've all dug into this and talking with your board colleagues across the state or in the metro, whatever. So similar to MSBA's guide for the superintendent evals, which is kind of the common standard across the state, do you all have examples from MSBA of example goals, formats, et cetera? Is that provided to you like they do with the superintendent, for example?
They do have those online.
They do.
So they're, yes, they are there, they're in the board training as well as for how to do this as a board, because again, the board goals do not have to do with passing down requirements to administration, they have to do with us, and how we are going to do this. I just, I agree, there's four pillars, there's community partnerships. What can, you know, basically, what can we do to do this common? And they give examples, but they also are, just like with everything else that the MSBA does, they recognize that boards are self-governing.
Yeah.
And so they're kind of nebulous.
Right, so where I was going with this was trying, and a couple of you are kind of teasing this out a little bit, and that is, you know, when an employee is setting their goals, I'll speak from my vantage point, when an employee is setting goals for their development, it's what they themselves are going to do to improve an area of their practice. That doesn't exempt the maybe department or school goals and priorities that exist, that are overarching. But I'm asking that employee, what are you doing to improve your craft around the professional standards that govern your role? And that align to the work that we have to do? And they always hear, like, you know you have things that you have to do for your job, what's an aspect of that that you can lean into for your own professional development? That department leader also has department priorities that are separate from their personal goals, when they do, because they have to do a self-assessment as well. And based upon that self-assessment in our conversation, one or two things pop up for them to really focus in on. But they also still have their department priorities. So I offer that to the board, as you think about, I mean, you all know how you get along and interact with one another or not. And so my, I guess, respectful push to the board is, we have district priorities that we, that we'll have to be accountable for. That's a non-negotiable. I think also, with your own self-reflection, how are you going to become a better governing body among yourselves juxtaposed to the district priorities that get set as well? So just, that's what I was wondering, is there a template that kind of offers that distinction?
I did not see one when I was looking at MSBA, and I did get a couple from different districts, they're all over the board, but.
And that's unfortunate, but like, I mean, you all in your careers.
I think it's an opportunity to.
Can I just say that when you go to the MSBA training about how to be boards, they do have those. And, but if you're looking in how to set district goals versus how boards interact with each other, you're gonna be looking in two different places. But I totally agree with what you just said, because that's a great analogy, and that's actually one of the analogies that was brought up in my first couple of years when I went to some of those summer seminars, when they talked about how would you set your own personal goals as an employee? When you go, you know, I want to be trained in this, I want to do this, I want to be a better this, I want to learn how to interface with this department better. You know, that it's all about your personal development, not about what's in the, what's in the domain of others. So, so that they do go through that.
Can I just add in, we as a board have operational oversight over the whole district. So perhaps the way that this has been done in the past is not necessarily been right or effective. And I just, I just want to read, this is just a short little paragraph in this book, it's page 156, and it just says, "Goals are vital in ensuring that a community's vision, which is our strategic plan, for its children, is being made the focus of adult attention. But goals require some type of measure of what students know or are able to do. As such, you can't have a goal without having assessment data." And so like, if we were to set a goal, like I talked about, of, you know, increase proficiency in reading by five percent, and then, like I said, at our board meeting, then the district is bringing forth different ideas of how they're working to achieve this goal. I mean, maybe they're bringing, you know, whatever it might be. I mean, again, that's for the district to determine, but again, we have operational oversight. And at the end of the day, students come to school to receive an education, and we heard loud and clear from our strategic planning that academic excellence has to be at the forefront. So like, I hope we can walk away tonight, setting a goal focused at least one on academic excellence, and how do we help, how do we help support our teachers and students to improve their outcomes in our district? And if we could just start there, I think, I mean, we've been talking now for like a half an hour and we haven't even gotten to the point of actually working on a goal. And so, I mean, I think we could be here all night having different opinions on how we're gonna do this, but I think we need to start somewhere, in my opinion.
And I'll just say this, because I, I mean, I kind of agree with you, but I understand what Director France is saying. I don't want to set a district goal for the board and then have Dr. Thomas and his team be responsible for carrying out the goal that I set for myself. That's the, that's the line we're trying to walk here. And in my mind, you know, you're right, academic excellence is all over this plan, but so is unity. And, you know, in the bottom right-hand corner of Dr. Zombush's sheet that she gave us last October is that effective school boards lead as a united team. And again, I agree, this is hard to quantify. But if we aren't committed to that, I think everything else just falls by the wayside. And that has been a struggle, if we're being honest with ourselves, for this board for quite a while. And so I'm wondering, understanding how difficult this is gonna be to quantify, if we can step back and not dictate to administration how they're going to achieve our goals and try to, by acting in maybe in a different way, a more united way, enable them to achieve the goals that you're talking about. I don't know if that made any sense, but.
It made sense. I think it made sense.
I think that, I think that we could, I think one idea is that we could, if we could have a standing agenda item every meeting on something that is working to achieve a pillar on our strategic plan, so whether it is academic excellence, or the next month we're talking about carrying in safe learning environments, or those four pillars, if we could have a standing agenda item, one, two, three, four, and then admin had come up. could have a standing agenda item, one, two, three, four, and then admin had come up and maybe talk about their goal on how they're working towards that pillar, that might be one way where, again, we're gaining that trust, and we're allowing admin to work towards our strategic plan, because ultimately, that is our guiding light. And like Dr. Thomas has said many, many times at the dais, this is not just a piece of paper. It's a living, breathing document. And so allowing them to do that work, but again, having a standing agenda item at every meeting, school board meeting, of one pillar on, you know, it could be, next month is academic excellence. Okay, what is the school district doing to support that pillar? I would be, I could, I could support that. While I like something that's more tangible and a SMART goal, I could probably support that.
And see, I think that gets Lisa more to, that's something that we as a board, we can ensure the agenda is, is requiring administration to talk about some things so that we can kind of keep track at a 10,000-foot level of what's going on. So I, I like that one. And I can, I could certainly support something like that. Dr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just share that I actually like the direction, Director Atkinson, that I hear you going, which kind of begins to merge with what Chair White is saying. And, and, you know, without naming a district, but there's one locally that has been referenced multiple times that kind of speaks to this notion of, you know, whatever their pillars might be. So to our pillar of academic excellence, this one happens to be ensure all students receive outstanding instruction for, for a district. Same concept. And it's, it's broad. So as a board, you're not getting granular into the percentages of students or percentages of growth and things of that nature. You're actually governing the conditions for that to actually have a fighting chance. And, and so the, the district here talks about focusing on high-quality universally instruction, universal instruction in all courses, goes on to talk about leveraging teacher collaboration, blah, 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 blah. The measurable, so to speak, or what's the outcome that the board would expect then, that the district would bring back? So the district will present reports to the board on academic progress of students by using available data disaggregated as appropriate that includes student performance, standardized assessment, participation in various coursework, and student and staff parent survey data. Like, that's the deliverable that you would expect to see as a board of progress monitoring that your goal of academic excellence is being met. Okay? And then for me, I'll just share, in our admin retreat this year, we've already, I mean, to the point just made, this document, the strat plan, governs our work. It was a centerpiece of our administrative retreat just two weeks ago. And as we are introducing this concept of a big, high-leverage strategy that we're going to be instituting, we also gave three academic priorities that center around that pillar, that's coming directly from teaching and learning, myself, that all are going to now have to align their plans to, one of these three priorities. Because we are also wanting to then kind of cascade the big overarching board goal, knowing that one was going to center on academics somewhere. We've already pre-messaged that with our staff of, here's our three priorities that we believe would create the, yet the next layer of conditions for schools and departments to be successful. And then principals would then be able to take that and say, okay, we're at the granular level, we're at the classroom level, and here's what we would need to do as a school. And then further, that principal's working with their grade level teams or their departments to say, and then this is what your contribution is for third grade, right? So that's the cascading effect that we're operating under, knowing that the board wasn't do something in one of the four, right? So I think that's a pretty safe assumption. So I just share that with the board as an example of another district that has been referenced as a benchmark to say, hey, what they're doing makes some sense. Well, this is their board goals for 25, 26 as well. So it might be something that you consider to think about so that you don't find yourself crossing the line way into the weeds, but you have something that you would expect to see from me and the team, if that makes sense.
If I may just kind of add to that, because I pulled a similar one too. And yes, they set the pillars and they're around the same strategic initiatives. The issue I have with that maybe is that a lot of these I think are not measurable, right? And so when you say quality instruction, well, when we go review you or whoever on, on if our, you know, if we believe that we provided quality instruction, I might have one opinion and another board member might have a totally different opinion, right, based on our experience? So, you know, I think, you know, back to your original question, when organizations set their strategy and their priorities, the way that goals filter down is that you set a goal in every single strategic area. And yes, your department might have things specific, but they fall within, like I, you know, our staff sets a goal, one for each area of the strategy. And yes, it's specific to their department and their role, but it, they set one to each. And they're required to do that. That's pretty standard in organizational planning. So I don't know, I like that approach, but I do just like caution, like, we need to make sure they're measurable somehow, or otherwise they're open to interpretation.
Can, can we go back to the analogy of, let's say, writing your own performance review for a job? So usually you do things that you actually have physical control over. You're not delegating something. What do we have control over? I like where Chair White went with unity and all that. But, you know, the other thing is, is that when we're looking at the strategic plan, and you're trying to look at yourself and what we're doing as our seven members together as a board, you can't have a good learning environment without a positive learning environment. That's one of the pillars. So how are we doing that within ourselves? So if, if we were to write our own, not delegating the workout, but write your own, what are you going to do next year in any one of these? You're not going to focus on all of them, because it's not, it's not practical. But in any one of the areas that we just evaluate ourselves on, what are you personally can do? And what are your personal priorities in that MSBA list? And how would you use the language of the strategic plan in that for yourself? If, if we could do that, each one of us individually, without, and I want to make this clear, without doing it because we're telling somebody else to get us something or to do something, just us?
Well, that's not really, I mean, that's the same way in business. You don't always have control over it. You're ensuring that it's happening amongst a team. So I may not be doing the job myself, but it is my team doing it. And so ultimately, it falls under me, you know, same thing, you know, that's the way you set them. So you can set goals. I may not be doing the day-to-day job around that, but I'm ultimately responsible for that. So it's, it's our responsibility as a board to provide a positive learning environment. How can we do that, right? We can make sure we're monitoring currency rates, right? And make sure that we're.
So can I, can I interject something? If we even just go with the positive.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm thinking back to prior to ever even being elected and, and learning, like, really as a board member, we, we are governance and policy is kind of our wheelhouse. So that's, that's just two things. And while I do agree, like, having, having measurable goals is important. If we just stick for a moment for the, on the positive environment, when I am looking at this board evaluation that we evaluated ourselves on, and if we're keeping, if we are keeping in mind that we are governance, which, yes, governance does include operational oversight, that, that is absolutely in there. I think last week, I was part of some MSBA coffee and conversations, and a question was asked by a board member. I really appreciated it. It says, "Where is the line for the conversation at the table?" If we're crossing into management discussion. And, and while, yes, we, we are, you know, operational oversight is definitely part, it's in our purview. And I liked what you said, Director Johnson, about, you know, our one-on-ones with Michael. Dr. Thomas, that, he is our one employee. So we're trying to, we have seven individual board members that make up this team, that we are trying to create a healthy collaboration with the, with our one employee in the district to achieve measurable goals. And how do we do that? So in our space as board members, being, you know, it's one thing that I brought up at our board retreat, that it was brought to my attention. And it's really kind of, I've been marinating on it, the fact that we are the district's brand ambassadors as the, as the board. So positive, how are we, how are we positively working together as a team? That does not mean that we agree on everything. Obviously, we know that we don't. And that's, and that's healthy. That's good. We're supposed to bring our individual perspectives. And we have to make sure that we are staying healthy and positive when there is a decision made, that, that we stand as that, you know, we stand on that as a board, that we are, I just think that while the points being made about having measurable goals is very important, it is also something to, there's something to be said about understanding what, what's talk at the table. Because I think there's ripple effects to everything that we, we say. So what, what, where is the line for conversation at the table? And when it is, you know, if we are stepping into management, if there's things that are questionable, are we, are we, you know, are we having those conversations with our superintendent, creating some understanding so that we are being the most positive brand ambassadors for our district that we, we can be? I don't know.
I'm sorry. Thank you. You know, yeah, I'm kind of, I've got like two schools of thought here. I mean, Director Francis, you were asking, how do we set a personal goal? I mean, if we have a goal, like something towards academic excellence or academic achievement, then we know that we can allocate the correct resources to ensure that the resources are directed directly into the classroom to support the teachers, so that they can then focus on, you know, having the right student support in place, whatever, so that then the proficiency scores will come up. I mean, at the end of the day, that's why students go to school. And then I want to go back to what Director Bullion said. So I'm looking at, like, when I look at like standard number three, create conditions district-wide for student and staff success. That kind of aligns under that creating an environment for a positive learning environment. So like, if we were to have transparency, I know we see the stakeholder surveys, but if we had more transparency to those surveys, we could take a deeper dive into like, what are some of the underlying issues of how we need to support our staff? And so also having more transparency creates more trust within our district, within our board, within our, with our administration. So I think there's a lot of little things we can do, but I really truly think it goes back to really focusing in on what are those two or three, I like four, because it goes straight to the pillars, what are those goals that we're going to set as a board so that we are aligned? And then, you know, we've been criticized for being an ineffective board. Well, that criticism is coming from the fact that we haven't had these board, those board goals in place. And then there's no direction for administration. I mean, yes, they're following the strategic plan, but there's misalignment between what the board is trying to achieve, or not achieve, but have oversight from the views and values of the community, and what's perhaps happening at a lower level. And so I think it's just, I think it's more, I, I think if we have clear goals in place, that's going to solve a lot of our problems, to be honest with you.
And let me go quick for it, calling you, Dr. Thomas. I'm hearing this, the word oversight a lot. And I'm, you know, I'm a pretty simple guy. And I'm seeing, how can we measure something? To me, as I'm, as I'm hearing everybody talk about measurable goals and oversight, well, how, how do we exercise oversight unless we are receiving information? To me, a simple goal for us, it might seem silly, I hope it doesn't, is that each month, we are going to talk about one of the pillars. That's the goal. And we are going to commit to, to one of them every month, so that we get information, so that we can oversee, and in a proper governance structure, get to what you're talking about, making sure resources are allocated, you know, all the things that we're responsible for. So.
I'd like to, I'd like to say that, I think, I think that if we, what, the district already has agenda, and, and Dr. Thomas has his dashboard that he has been sending down there. But I would like to see a goal, just like what you just said, only with all of our decisions to have a checkmark to say, are we looking at this from what we can do to do exactly what Director Bullion said, be the brand ambassadors? So we do propagate those community partnerships to help us achieve the goal, that we're looking at this in the terms of positive learning environment, that we're looking at this in the terms of how are we allocating our resources? And how are we doing that as a board to make sure that that happens? And therefore, how is that then impacting, affecting, and improving academic excellence? Because obviously, you don't put a change in, in October or something like that and expect to see something go up. It's, it's time. But actually, making it a board goal to include all four pillars in our decisions, as we relate to each other, and as we relate it to our decisions at the board table and our discussions.
Because I think that's how we get to those measurables that I think everybody's rightfully concerned about. If we're constantly talking about these four pillars, which were put in place with this big community input series of meetings and gatherings throughout the beginning of 2024, if we're constantly talking about these, then those measurables that you speak of, that's when they happen. Because, okay, now administration knows that, you know, in November, we have to talk about positive learning environments. What, what can we show the board that we're doing? That we're moving, you know, we are honoring that pillar?
I don't love the word.
Well, but it is, it is a.
Provide measurable, you know, provide metrics, or provide some, you know, provide something, some insight into what we're looking at. But I think, I would love to see, I like that line of thought. I would love to see academic excellence done every board meeting. And the other three pillars, maybe we rotate, given that is sort of the forefront. And actually, you know, three of our standards really highlighted that personally.
Hi, everyone. Couple of things. I, I think, I don't think that there's, I don't think ineffectiveness can be tied to not having board goals, because I think we're giving ourselves a little too much credit here. I think a lot of the community are like, just get stuff done. To that end, I think our strategic plan is the district's strategic plan. It's not the board's strategic plan. It's semantics, I realize. But I think that's important. To that end, I like what we have heard about, and it kind of already started. I know last school year, we were, during Laker Pride, I think that was part of, like, the school year last year was like, during Laker Pride, the directors would get up and do a presentation of some kind tied to the strategic plan and things like that. So I think there is something there. And in, I'm, I'm just listening. I'm a digester, as you all know. And I tried to kind of come up with something. And on the side of that, last week, the Southwest Metro Board met, and our, the superintendent for Southwest Metro did his goals, and we approved those as a board. And he tied each one of his goals to their pillars for their strategic plan. It was color-coded. It was a beautiful document. And what I really liked, I think we can kind of maybe take a page. So like, to a couple of different board members' points, you know, something like a goal, like, and, and I, academic excellence is one of our pillars, but they're all equal on the strategic plan. So I don't think we should have one over others. But I think, you know, have a timeline to it. So we're almost in September. So by September 20- September. So by September twenty twenty six, the Board of Education will ensure district leadership regularly reports to the community on each of the strategic plan four pillars in the interest of planning accordingly and providing support where needed. And then our deliverables under that, for for measure, our regular a regular agenda item at board business meetings, now that can be a separate agenda item, it could be part of Laker Pride, like kind of how we started last year.
It's on the agenda somewhere.
Right. The school presentations that we were talking about, that the principals are going to deliver, where that outlines school goals, the finance town halls that we hold, the built plans, things like that. So all of those deliverables ladder up to that goal. And I think they're measure measurable, because it's like, we know when they're happening. And then but the point is to be accountable and, you know, talk to things, plan accordingly, as as we're talking about, plan accordingly, provide the support where needed, and really spell that out in the goal. And I think it does become measurable. I was spitballing with the language, obviously, but just I and that was one goal. And I do think maybe two or three goals, but we got a year, because we're going to set them again next year. So I think we make them. What's the word? Not bite sized, but just kind of, you know, simple in word usage, but measurable and something everybody can get, everybody understands, and move on. And I will say, I love the MSBA. It's such a great resource. I was very disappointed in this process. I tried to get answers to questions I have. I got questions at nine o'clock last night, and I could do nothing with it before tonight's meeting. So I have an issue with some of the conclusions made that were just brought to us and said, here's what they said, with no context, no explanation. I tried to get explanation from MSBA and got nowhere. So I'm not a huge fan of this particular process. But I think we can I think we can get there. And happy to share what I was just kind of tiki-tacky writing here. But I think we can get there. And I like the agenda item. But I think there's other things that can fall under that goal that make just as much sense. And it speaks to the accountability, what is it called? The standard, standard for accountability, hold school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations. I think that falls right into that.
Can I add to, I think along the same lines as as Jess was talking about, we've got community partnerships. So I just found one from another local district here, right? In addition to regular attendance to school board meetings and study sessions, every school board member will attend at least three school or district related events. The measurement is provide a brief report during, right, at the end end of our meetings. So three additional things, right? Does it have to be three? It could be ten, it could be a hundred, right? But but at a minimum, right? And make sure that you're saying, you know, what you're doing to get out into the public, into the community, right? Just like we tell Dr. Thomas to do.
Right.
We should be doing the same thing, right? Just like Jess was saying, right? Small, attainable, bite sized.
Small and tangible. Thank you. That was what I was looking for. Bite sized didn't make any sense.
Actually, Charles, I love that idea. That's actually an idea that we came up with as a board about six years ago, that when we all go to our committee meetings, that we actually, for one year, we actually provide a write up ahead of time. So it's actually in there, and we can talk to it.
I like that idea.
Committee notes. And when you have more than one person on a committee, you join together to give those highlights, instead of just verbally saying them, particularly at the end of the meeting, when not a lot of people are paying attention. So that was something that was one hundred percent within our control, helped engage the community a little bit more, and also communicate and improved communication between the board members. I know that right after COVID, that became fairly difficult to do with time and resources. But I love that idea, because that would also help engage with the engagement of portions that are kind of hidden in these little things that they grouped them in. But another another thing that that we've said in previous years was holding each other accountable and and making sure that, because we all have busy lives. And when we don't have a chance to to review the materials ahead of time, to make the meetings the most productive they can be, that we actually make a note to let people know, I didn't have a chance to read this, so I'm going to need a little help, that sort of thing. That helps administration, it helps us, it helps other board members. So we're not regurgitating a lot of things during the and I'm using that word a lot. It's I don't know why tonight, but I am. But, you know, that sort of thing, so that we actually set a goal for ourselves to always be prepared and have the questions in, or at least let the board chair know when we're the ones who didn't have a chance to prepare, or something like that. So that helps to create the conditions for the most successful conversation at the board table. But there's little things like that that actually focused on the group areas that they had for board unity, for board, for board functional behavior, and and also to cut down on board meeting time. Yeah. So we're not here till ten o'clock at night.
Lisa.
No, I was just had a question for Director France. How does that align to the strategic plan, though? I'm trying to understand. I mean, I thought we were focusing on like the four pillars.
We are.
So I understand, we need to come to the board prepared, we need to be respectful of each other's opinions. But I'm I'm trying to think about this as this, our strategic plan was developed by our community, like, these are our community schools, we represent our community. And so developing goal to achieve this plan, to work toward this plan, is sort of what I was trying, what I thought we were here to do tonight.
So if you'll let me explain, I would be more than happy to explain. So in other words, if if we are more prepared, then we don't have to suffer the community and the administration through reminding us exactly, let's say, what some of the testing criteria, the quarterly testing criteria, and what's in it, that sort of thing. So we're prepared, and we're prepared to take that baseline information and actually make it better as a as a team. So we're not reinventing the same conversation all the time with our with our level of or lack of preparedness, or asking the same questions again. Same thing goes with financial information with optimizing resources. And then with positive learning environments, we can take that also into all of our individual committee meetings also to make sure that that is embedded in the policy and how we're optimizing resources on on finance and operations, et cetera. And then with community partnerships, we do that through brand, positive brand, propagation of the community. So we all make a commitment potentially to be part of at least one community partnership, that sort of thing, as we're as we're continuing through that. Sometimes that community partnership is basically the committee we sit on. But we we do that ourselves by taking the accountability responsibility upon ourselves to be prepared for those meetings, so that when we do talk about academics, we're doing so with with the baseline of information that everyone came prepared for, so we can move ahead and work with our staff to make sure that we're all on the same page. Again, they're the experts, and we're 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 the conduits from the community to provide that feedback to them, that we're working with finance, that we're come prepared to, let's say, discuss the actual financial data and not re use it again, regurgitate stuff that's already been basically asked and answered before, so that we're all moving ahead, and we're not here till ten o'clock at night, which is, does nobody makes a good decision after sitting here for three or four hours. Nobody does.
I appreciate that. And I think we all have to give ourselves grace.
That's one of the examples that I was using. And that had to do with us being accountable for the work that we're supposed to do, us showing respect for each other and the opinions and not interrupting each other. That showing unity as a board, and also stewardship of what we're responsible for.
Lisa, then Jessica.
Yeah, thank you. And like I said, we have to give ourselves grace. Like, we haven't all served here for four year eight years, like you have, Director France. So we're going to have questions. I think what I would like to, rather than focusing on like how we interact, I'd actually like to see, because we're all adults, and we know how to be respectful and value each other's opinions. But I would actually like to see when we're reviewing, say, Fastbridge scores, which I'm hoping we can review the spring ones here soon, I would like to see solutions. So yes, our scores went down from fall to spring. What are we seeing in the classroom? What are some of the solutions? Like, what's being done? And 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 rather than us having to try to dive deep into data that we don't really even understand, perhaps, I would like to see more solutions brought forward of things that are happening in our district to make improvements that align to our strategic plan. That's what I would like to see in some of the presentations. So it's not necessarily always focusing on, I mean, yes, we want to focus on the positive, but let's get down and dirty and talk about what's not working, and how what can we do to support our teachers and our staff? And what is a board? What is a board can we do, whether it's changes to policy, allocating resources? But if we don't understand what the real problems are of what's really happening, and 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 allowing and trusting staff to bring that data forward, and being transparent about what some of those issues are, we cannot make the decisions to help and to partner together to bring positive solutions to our district.
And I would and I would just say that how we flesh that out, and if we could have agreed that, as simple as it might sound, that we are going to commit to talking about one of these pillars every month, the things that you're talking about will get fleshed out. We can't do this in a vacuum. Unless we're getting information, we can't oversee. You're right. This isn't, this is the district's strategic plan, Jess. Our job is to make sure it's being implemented. How do we do that? By getting a regular update on, I guess, we're kind of landing on on each pillar, on a pillar each month. And if we could agree that that's as simple as it is, a goal for for this year, could we land there for one of them?
Add lead by example in that also?
I think.
Lead by example in that? Just I love what you just said. I just would add that we are individually responsible as a board to lead by example in that, not just push it down. Because like you just said, and I agree with Jess, this is the district's
How do you measure that? I guess I'm still struggling with how how that's a measurable goal. Even I like bringing one of these to each meeting. I think it's a fantastic idea. However, does that get us back to the core of the problem where we said, you know, we're reviewing our one employee? Have we set the expectations of what we hope them to achieve, right? So when we talk about optimizing resources, you know, what is what is our goal? Because if we're not clear on that, he doesn't know what to work towards. I might measure one way, you might measure another. And that's what I my fear is, right? Because we're not we're not getting to the core of that problem.
And well, I think respectfully, though, I think this our board goals, he's our, they're separate from Dr. Thomas's goals.
They should roll up to ours, right? Like, our strategic plan of.
I don't I don't I don't agree with I.
That's how.
Not as not as not our board goals are for the seven of us.
Can I can I ask a general question?
I'm struggling with that a little.
So we just took a survey that's measurable. And are we, one of the questions I had in the very beginning was, and and understanding that the MSBA survey has not changed, it's it's extremely generic. But is if you're trying to get a measurable goal, and again, this survey was about the board, it wasn't about the district.
Right.
It was about you as a board member, and what you have control over, and how you feel the board is working together to do this. So if if the metrics are typically, we take one of those areas, and we say, we'd like to improve it by ten or fifteen percent.
Right.
You know, that sort of thing.
But that's it. So like, if you take an example, create conditions district wide for student, create conditions district wide for student and staff success.
Right.
Right? Like, how do we put a measurable goal around that? And that, to me, is around, you know, academics, or, you know, whatever pillar that falls under, but or that maybe is the positive learning environment that aligns to. And then, you know, something measurable, because what I might consider, you know, condition for success, you may not, or you know what I mean? So that's.
Sure. And I think.
But is that the core issue?
One of the things that keeps popping into my head is, you know, you just the let's just say, speaking about what you just brought up, creating conditions district wide for students and staff, student and staff success. I'm thinking back to the student or the student success seminar that Dr. Thomas and I attended a year ago, or maybe it was two two summers ago. And it was all on student success, achievement. And one of the things mentioned was if the board is the topic of discussion all of the time because of how we are or not working together, if we are a subject of conversation, that is taking away from the work of the district. And that is something that we are finding ourselves in. I believe that it is my belief that that's that is something that we need to to receive that feedback as a board. We are the subject of conversation often, and it's not because of what we're doing to support our students and staff. And each one of us, that's a hard pill to swallow. And every single one of us make up part of that. So.
So how would you set a goal around that? Like, I think that's a great example. How would you set a goal around that?
I have an idea. How would I set a goal around that? Honestly, my initial thought is, I think it's more having measurable things that we we just do. When I I think my initial thought goes to, we have to be very careful in our board goals aren't the same. They're not, you know, yes, the the community spoke loud and clear. We want to see increases in all of, you know, these are all our priorities. We, I think, each and every one of us, staff including, probably more so, want to see increases in in our in our scores. That is one measurable. And I think we have to figure out how we can agree to separate the number or what that measurable looks like. Because we have, it is a fine line, and I feel like we are constantly, you know, our toes are dipping into management a lot. And so I think as a board, I would love to even walk away with how we can say we're not stepping our toes into what's not our space, while also understanding that operational oversight is definitely under, that is our purview. And like, you know, again, going back to our one on ones. And so what are we going to do as a board that we aren't the subject of conversation? That is anything that is distracting from the strategic plan and what we want to achieve. All of us want to achieve, our whole community wants it. We want it really bad. So how we have to figure out, how how do we stop getting in in our own way?
I think, oh, sorry. I think Director Goldstein kind of nailed it when she said, it's doing the work, right? It's it's doing the work that we need to do to support our district at the board table. I just want to ask a question. So if if we were to put a goal in of ensuring that all third graders are proficient by third grade, right? And you're saying that's not our that's not our authority, that's not at the board level. Where is it at in our district? Where would that fall? I'd like to hear where where would that fall? Like, who's setting that goal? Do we have any achievable goals set that have to do with increasing academic excellence within our district? And I'm not trying to be a pain. I really truly want to understand at what level, then, if you're saying it's not at our level from an operational oversight, where is it at?
Though, Director Atkinson, those goals would fall directly along our school improvement goals, and have an aggregate. So what's our aggregate target based upon, you know, an average of of cohort performance over a period of time? What would be the anticipated growth? And what would be the stretch growth that we could expect to see? And then principals will take a look at that and say, okay, in our school, this is what our historical trajectory in that same timeframe has been. What would our contribution be to to meeting that goal? So that's where a lot of that work happens within our skip plans. And then. Um, and then from those skip plans, that's where then our departments say, okay, if the skip uh, goals are talking about a specific professional development that they've identified that their staff need, well then through the teaching and learning for, and I'm just arbitrarily saying this, that teaching and learning might have in their department goal, um, an investment on, um, effective mass strategies for six, eight, right? As one of the core deliverables that they want to give, because that's what they're hearing from the middle schools as their biggest need. So essentially, what is our obligation to support that? Because they're saying, I need that for us to meet our portion of that goal. So, so that's where a lot of that conversation would happen. And, you know, I, in a similar vein, I was thinking, uh, Director Mason, you had mentioned, um, on one, two, three, the third one down you had pointed to? What is that one again?
Create conditions district-wide for student and staff success.
Yeah. So create conditions district-wide for student and staff success. So going back to a couple of you talking about like, what, you know, if I, if I put myself in your shoes, as a board member, what would I do? Where does that align? So that, that to me aligns to, um, the pillar of positive learning environments, okay? So maybe my commitment, if I were a board member, would be to say, okay, once a month, my, my goal is to go out and do a school visit and sit with that administrator and understand, you know, a touch point on their skip, on their skip plan. Okay? So I have a familiarity of the school. And I'm not saying you're going to micromanage it, but you're, you're finding an entry point. Because as a board director, you can read all the data reports in the world. We can present into our blue in the face. There is something fundamentally different for you to have a presence in our schools to walk in, touch it, feel it, hear it, smell it, all that, right? Smell it if it's middle school. Um, but, but you have that context. And, and so now when I come back and I see this report, I can start making better meaning of any decisions that I might need to make. That's a very measurable goal, and it actually shows your support for understanding that learning community and bringing a value add. Cause now I come back, my monthly report is, I was at school so-and-so this, this month, and I participated in kindergarten. And I, uh, read books with the kids. And when I talked with the principal, one of the things that she or he shared with me was this fact. You know, and as a board, I think it's important for us to, you know, whatever. So that would be an example. That kind of jumped out when you read that to me of how do you crosswalk then the MSBA findings from your 72 questions? You had another conversation probably with MSBA on that. Um, to what matters most from our community, and that's our community's strategic plan. So then that would make a meaningful measurable goal that as a board director, I can do something. That doesn't mean, like going back to Director Atkinson's question, that doesn't mean that our, that we, we, uh, exempt the goals set for growth on a variety of different metrics. We're, we're sharing and, and put together that preliminary dashboard of progress monitoring metrics. Very similar to when you go into your doctor's office, they're checking your temperature, your heart rate, your cholesterol, like when you do your physical, these are progress indicators that they want to kind of keep top of mind. And so when they see something that's going awry, cholesterol is going up, this isn't saying you're a bad person because you have high cholesterol. That's the shaming of data, right? We would never expect a doctor to do that. And as you've heard me say, data doesn't give you answers. It makes you ask better questions. So as your physician, I'm going to say, hey, what's your exercise regimen been? What's your diet been? Last time we met, you know, a year ago, you were going to try this. How did, how did that pan out for you? Okay? Now I might have to issue a different treatment plan for you. Similar to our teachers. When we see those scores, trust me, teachers are putting in countless hours busting their tails, um, every single day, giving 110%. No teacher goes in to say, I'm going to teach to all but three kids today. Like, they don't do that. They're going in, giving it their all. When they get it back, they're saying, hmm, why are these three students not grasping this content? Let me try a four to six week intervention. And then I'm going to come back after those four to six weeks and see how that student is doing. Maybe that got them that jumpstart that they needed to get aligned. Maybe they're continuing to struggle and there's a second intervention and maybe ultimately goes into a 504 or a special ed conversation. But that's what we're doing. You all would never do that work. Like, that's so into the weeds. But what you can do, and I just use that little example of that entry point there is, what's your commitment? I think Director Johnson said the same thing, of going to one school a month for a visit. That's a touch point. It's something small, measurable, attainable. Um, and it can be a result that comes back as a reflection of a learning, um, or a wondering. And that may come up here at the board table. It might come up to me during our one-on-ones. Director Johnson mentioned having, or, and I think Director France as well, both of you, the, uh, community partnerships. So you might, as a board, just say, you know, with the seven of us, we want to establish seven new community partners for our district this year. That's what we're going to commit to. So within your networks, your job, military, corporate, whatever, you start reaching out to say, hey, we would like to get a partnership established. And, and, and by working with me as your number one employee, your, your, your sole employee, you have a goal of seven, and obviously you would be br- bringing that forward to say, yep, I've got this group that would like to come in and they want to do before and after school homework help for this school. Okay? So that's something that you're doing as a board. Does that align? Yep. It also aligns to creating positive learning environments because you're bringing in resource and support, you know, in your role as a board. And there would be a secondary effect per- per- perhaps on the tutoring before and after school that might impact achievement scores for kids, right? Um, now, I think, Director Johnson, you had asked a question, one board, I think we were doing a presentation at the middle school one day, and you asked something about any changes with the cell phone policy and grades or something like that. So will there be a direct causation on some of the stuff that you are engaging in? Maybe not. Could there be a correlation to say, yeah, we've actually noticed that, you know, when kids put the phones away, this started happening? Now, we don't have scientific proof to say that that was the sole factor, but it definitely created a different learning environment for our kids. So I just, I'm, I'm offering you the both and because it's all of what you're saying as individuals is landing for me as your superintendent in different ways. I think the board has work to do. You all are not a perfect team. My senior leadership team is not a perfect team. We are perfectly imperfect. And if we're not committing resources to ourselves to be better as teams, there's no way I'm going to be of any value, or the senior leadership team will be of any value to our schools. So we do have retreats. And we commit to doing that twice a year in a very formal way because we want to make sure that we are solid because as we show up, we can foster positive learning environments when we're aligned better as a team. And each department has their own goals, and every school has their own goal. All that still stands. But what can we do better as a team based upon that Studer survey that comes back to us? We read every single one of those. The staff is going to hear me say this tomorrow morning. And when I see this, I'm like, wow. This is a theme that's jumping out. So what are we as a senior leadership team going to do? Because our district staff or our parents or whomever, they're, they're telling us this is what needs to change. What is our responsibility to that? Right? So, you know, I, I, I think you're all saying great things. And I, I, I just encourage you as a board, what are you doing that directly aligns to the four pillars? All of you have said this in some form or fashion. I think you all have great ideas around that. And what is it that can be the high tide that rides parallel with the work that I do as your superintendent? While also committing some resource to yourselves, giving yourself some gift of your own development to being a better board. To your point, Vice Chair, it's, it's tough sometimes to accept that, that aspect of it. But in that space of humility, that's where we learn. That's where we grow. And, and that's what I'm committed to as your superintendent, which is why I say every year, your feedback matters to me. And when I have feedback, that kind of cancels itself out at the end of the year of an evaluation. Like, what do I do with this? Right? So, so I'll, I'll stop there. I'll just offer that for some consideration, but you're all saying some good things. Now it just needs to be aligned and then not over-engineer it. What are the three things, or the four things that fits with the pillars? What are the four things you're going to do? Both that you as a board might do, as well as some of the things that kind of run parallel with the work that your superintendent's doing.
If I can have one, so, I, um, if I can make it succinct. Um, I think I want us to caution ourselves from, I do like, you know, Director France, you shared, you know, it, it used to be that the, uh, when, when board members would attend a committee meeting and they would do a write-up. And maybe that, I, I'm not sure if this is what you said, so correct me if I'm wrong, but was that write-up then added to the board book?
Um, for a short period of time, yes. Um, we tried to. Um, um, there was a timing and some resources, but the concept was there to be able to share the information.
Right. And, and so I don't, I don't want to create, I don't want to create, um, barriers to us. I, I think, and I also don't want to, I don't want us to create things that actually in the, in the goal of trying to improving that where we end up starting focusing on things that actually can divide. So I, I want us to be cautious about that. Um, so when we're thinking about the boards, I think, I, I think it's a sticking point, at least for me. Cause we, I understand wanting smart goals and wanting them to be measurable. I think we all do. We all want to see our district shine bright. We want to see our district score highest in every area. I think that is a goal of every single community member that's here. Obviously, board and down into the, the staff and students, we all want that. So when we're looking at our board goals, it's how, how are we going to create them that are measurable, that they aren't stumbling blocks for us? That they, um, you know, where it's, you know, um, like you said, with timing for write-up. Like, some committee meetings, there's, the timing is-
We did not, due to COVID, we didn't get a chance to go back and tweak it. So that was the, that was a little odd, but, but the concept that you were talking about was there. The concept that, that Director, uh, Johnson was referring to was there. It was the idea that was just starting to percolate.
So maybe a, a, a board goal, um, is at our regular meetings that we do have a board report, whatever it may be.
Wrote it. Wrote it.
What?
Wrote it.
I thought you said wrote it.
I don't know what that means.
Sorry. W R O T E.
Okay, thank you.
Not wrote.
You wrote.
Yes.
But, you know, so-
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
From what we're already doing?
What?
I'm sorry.
Lisa.
Oh, how is that different with what we're already doing? We do board reports on our committees. I'm, I maybe I just don't understand.
They're verbal maybe? Is that what you're saying? You like to write? So if we have a finance committee reading, meeting, the expectation, the way I understand this, is that we would, one of us write up notes from that meeting and share that at, whether we give you a paper copy or share it before and during the meeting.
Can I qualify that a little bit? One of the things was to, and this also led to the finance committee, the policy committee, et cetera, having, um, community members in it, um, because what was getting lost in translation was the community's comments, not our input as we were sharing it with the rest of the board. Um, to make sure that the community was being heard, because sometimes when we do it, we translate it into what we want, how we think, et cetera. And that was, that was part of it. So it wasn't just saying, you know, this is what we decided. This was like the, the permutations of how it was done. So we could share that and bring that to light. Um, so we could actually understand how the decisions at the board were being understood. Which helps with, because what you were saying, if I could just add, what you said earlier, you know, what, when I read some of the surveys, what I was, I feel the same thing as you. There was a ton of negative comments about the board in there. Now, there were positive comments too, but, but those surveys were measuring us as well. And we, and we used to, and I'm not sure if we do this anymore, but we used to have a survey that went out to the community for community staff, uh, and students. And part of that was evaluating how they view us and the job that we're doing. And I don't know if we've seen that for a while, but it's, we used to have that. There used to be like a, Dan, do you remember? They used to have something in there? Yeah.
I, I remember it, yes.
Um, and that would be a way that we could measure that too, to make a commitment to take that feedback.
And that is something that, um, Studer says they can incorporate into the stakeholder survey. And you can have a bank of questions. Um,
I'm wondering if, um, you know, in, in the, we've talked, we've talked in several instances about, you know, at least it's heavy on my heart, all, all, all the time. It's like that healthy collaboration, healthy collaboration together, healthy collaboration with the district. So I'm wondering if maybe a step, I, I do agree, Director Atkinson, that we do, we have, we do do board reports. So what makes that different? Um, so I like the, I like that you, that push. I'm wondering if the, uh, uh, an addition to our board report is that we do that in tandem with either Dr. Thomas but, or the senior leadership that is part of those committees. Um, if, if we're, just so that it's not just out of our, um, lens. You had kind of said that sometimes we report back and it's through our lens. If we are, um, if we, if, I'll say, speaking for myself, if I attend a policy advisory committee, uh, Director Johnson, if, if there is a, um, from my lens, if I, if I'm discussing with, um, uh, Ms. Director Cuthern, um, you know, and we, we come up with a report that is agreeable, and then maybe the same, uh, Director Johnson would also, uh, connect with, uh, that senior leadership just so that it is a more, um, collaborative report, that it's not just through our lens, uh, and that, you know, it's, does that make sense? So I don't need to elaborate on that?
Yeah. And I, I think the way I understand that is that it kind of goes back to standard five. Um, engage your local community and res- represent the values and expectations that they hold for their schools. So that's on the MSBA thing that we just did. So what, what I think to understand is, is that we're in the committee and we're talking about boundary changes, and we hear one perspective that says, you know, we're having, this might cause traffic issues. And another perspective says, well, this might, whatever the perspective might be. But then as a board, we're coming to the table and was saying, we had this meeting and we heard this, and we heard that. And we, we, we report back on all the different perspectives that we had so that every board member can fully understand the different perspectives that were brought forth in the committees that, um, that we're having. So that would, I think, would align with the, um, engage our local community and represent the values and expectations that they hold for their schools. And then it also aligns with community partnerships. So I think that that's, that could be definitely a measurable and achievable goal.
I, I, what I'm hearing are three summaries that have come across. One, um, create a goal like Dr., like Director Doctor, how about that? Director Johnson said about, um, you know, something might be more in the schools or having that feedback on the committees, making us more personally accountable and then sharing with the board about, you know, that feedback as we go into our various roles. I, I, and I want to balance that with what, what, what Dr. Thomas said. Maybe we should take advantage of that Studer survey and incorporate potentially a question, a couple of questions in there about the board and get the community feedback. So we have something like a, a, a statistic and a measurable goal to work on with a, with the standard community, uh, surveys, and maybe even ask Studer to build in the language from the pillars from the plan to say if the board is actually living up to that. So we have something external coming back to us that we would have a measurable goal on and feedback on. And then, um, and then- And then, um, and then also add in, uh, each one of our agendas each month, focusing on one or more of those pillars. Actually making an intentful and purposeful focus on one of those pillars in each of our agenda meetings. That's kind of the way I, I summarize, summarized up the communication for the past hour. I don't know if that's correct or if anyone agrees with that.
I have one.
Yeah.
Final.
Go ahead.
Do you mind?
No, I was gonna say, that actually aligns back to the whole school district accountable for meeting student learning needs. So if you're, if we're going back to the MSBA thing, it goes back to we're holding, by having those standard agenda items. We are holding school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations.
Yep.
So we're kind of forcing ourselves back into this MSBA, you know, survey, whatever, so.
Um.
Go ahead, I won't talk anymore.
I think it goes back to something that we, that Chair White pointed out. A while ago. Goes back to the, the trust thing with, with Dr. Thomas. And, um, something I just wrote down wa, was, uh, positive learning environments, right? We normally get some, some kind of presentation on, you know, suspension, detentions, disruptions, things like that. And we build that in as one of the pillars and then use the data from, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. And then have the principals come in and then they're setting a plan, right? And then we use it, our additional resources of our school resource officers, then we, then we bring them in and how can they help? And then, then we're taking all of that and then we're going back to Dr. Thomas and saying, now what can we do? And then we're coupling that with our community partnerships and the people that we have. And then we're going into the schools and making sure that all of that is happening, right? We're taking all of these things and then obviously reporting back to him, you know, what, using all of this in tandem. To ultimately do what each one of us are here for, which is to better every one of our students. I, that's how I see it. And ultimately, I think letting. Not letting Dr. Thomas drive our goals, but when we say, you know, every month we're gonna talk about this, talk about one of these pillars. But if he's got something that's on the agenda, like, let's, we don't need to divi, deviate. If we're gonna talk about FastBridge, right? Let's focus on academic excellence for that one. Even if we talked about it last month, like, let's go back to academic excellence. Because then we can say, hey, this is a perfect time to say, hey, we're talking about FastBridge? Like, we can go forward and say, cool, let's, you know. And we could find the goal and things like that. Like, let's not tie ourselves to just a number.
If we're committed to doing this, we can also start to try to calendar out where the, one of these pillars might fall. So that doesn't, so that doesn't happen. So we aren't going back to back when it's not necessary. We're getting close to the bewitching hour. And I want to be sensitive to that, but I also have really appreciate. And I'm, um, i- i- if, if we can land on, we, we are gonna talk about one of these every month. That's, we are committing to that. The, I, I, I'm intrigued by what Dr. Thomas was kind of alluding to around, um, you know. Getting into the buildings with, with the principals. In the past, I don't know if, I don't know if Patrick wants seven of us there every month, but.
I know you're getting it. We used to assign.
We used to have building reps.
Yeah.
Uh, assigned into the board. That, that to me, I thought was always a real efficient way that, okay, I'm Redtail. So, maybe not every month, but three to four times a year, I'm, this is what I am gonna commit to this. And, you know, if, if, uh, you, I'm, I'm, I'm up in December for my reports. I make sure that I get with the people at Redtail Ridge and, and, and we talk about academics and the things they're doing that you've put in place. And then we can report. I, maybe that's something we need to get back to.
I liked that model. I don't remember why they stopped doing that model, but I like that model where we made sure. And then we would rotate every so many months or a year or something like that, where each board member would get assigned a school. And for the high school, I think they would get assigned like an area, or like a learning area or something like that. Whether it be like, you know, tech, um, whether it be men caps or something like that. You know, uh, something, but we used to have that model. You, it was before your time.
Yeah, and, and, and I've been in, so I've experienced a very similar model in another district where board member, members were assigned to areas. And so the schools in that area, that you were the board rep. And you would join the regional superintendent or things of that nature. You might join me for a walkthrough, et cetera. So I, again, what I'm trying, I'm not trying to have you go in there and do my job or do Dr. Anderson's job. But you're going in there to have a touch point with the school community. Your presence matters in our schools, uh, which was a very big shift when I started here, because that wasn't the case. When I first started, you weren't so welcomed in the schools. And that was one of the things I couldn't quite understand. I think you need to be there and you're there to understand context. And, and, and just, you know, you're not there to direct work or whatever, but again, you're, you're there to understand context. So that during an, a, a, a FastBridge presentation or during, um, you know, a building consolidation, uh, presentation. You have some context and/or perspectives that staff have shared with you that you want to bring forward of that voice, right? Um, that you've heard. That's in addition, because you might hear it or receive it differently than I might, than Dr. Anderson might, you know, Director Ryder, et cetera, so.
So that did bring up something, because I think, and I, and I don't know all the, I, I wasn't there, I don't know, think that happened. But there were instances where people crossed the line between giving direction in the school. And I, and I think that the general, if I remember correctly, somewhere along the line, the board came to a consensus, right when I, right after I started, that it was gonna stop. But you're right, you're there to build a relationship, to understand and to learn, to observe. But we have no power other than you as our, as our employee. And as long as we remember that, I, I would, Dan, if it's okay, I, I, I would suggest, uh, Chair White. To, um, to start that up again, because I do think it's a valuable relationship building. And then if we determined, you know, once a year or whatever that we swap, or somebody picks a new school or something like that. That, that relationship and understanding the cadence of those schools and understanding what they deal with on a daily basis. Rather than just touching something like an hour, one month in one school and another hour. It's, you know, it, it's, 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 it's a totally different feeling to actually get in there and understand. The daily.
I think that gets down to the, what we're really after here. You know, how, how, how do you build trust? Well, that's through a relationship. And so if we can just commit to that for a building, for a year or a school year. And, you know, understanding, uh, if we can, if we can sketch out a, a calendar for when you might be expected to make some kind of a report. Those that, that are unfortunately still working. Can, can adjust their schedule to, uh, uh, to make that work. Because again, I understand there's, you, you, you'll need, you need time to be able to, to maneuver this. And I don't want it to be a burden, I want it to be an opportunity.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I personally think, you know, having visited most of our schools, it's, it's really hard to spread ourselves out. So I, I like the idea, I, I, I like it a lot. And then, um, I just want to add, so I think we've done a good job of dialing into some, dialing into some of these goals. The one that I'm still very concerned about is if we go back to standard two, where it says, set and communicate high expectations for student learning. With clear goals and plans for meeting those. If that's something that we are, and I remember many of the questions with, that, that led to getting to this answer. I mean, I could, I have all the questions, I could pull them up. But if we are not doing that, setting and creating high expectations for student learning with clear goals. And plans for meeting those, that I don't think we're doing, we're doing what we need to do as a board.
So that, the question is then, do we do that?
So how do we get to that?
Do, do we do that through Dr. Thomas's goals? Is that, I mean, I mean, that's where I would land. No?
I mean.
They're separate.
I can pull up the questions, but I don't, I just think that that is our, that's our responsibility.
No, you're right, you're right, they are separate, Jess. What I'm saying is, is that where that, that push for academic, um, growth is placed. It's not put on necessarily on our plate, it becomes Dr. Thomas's plan.
Can I, can I just say that I do believe that if we actually develop that trust relationship and try that goal of us. Actually getting to know a school, a program or something like that. I think that's gonna enhance our ability to satisfy that standard, because we're gonna understand more. Um, it's, it's almost like a prerequisite, which I don't believe, particularly being such a new board, I don't believe that we have. And we, and let's face it, we've gone through a lot of changes. So, I mean, it's, it doesn't matter tenure or whatever, I think that it's, I think that that would be a prerequisite for our ability to contribute to that standard.
And a question would, I would ha, I would ask is, isn't this process that we went through with the strategic planning? And creating this, this plan, yes, it is a five-year plan, but I think every year we get to, you know, do a touch point on it. To see if there's any revisions needed or anything. But, I mean, I would ask respectfully, isn't, is, wasn't this how we did number two? I mean, th, this came loud and clear through the community, that academics were top priority as well as unity. I feel like, you know, I, I was part of that. I think all of us can agree that, you know, those, those things. So, um, I think it's just getting clear as a board. Setting and communicating high expectations for student learning with clear goals and plans. It's, it's deciphering or, or coming up with the, you know, being solidified that we did. Cause I, I would question, like, isn't that what this is?
And. Well, I think you're, I think you're right, um, Director Bullion, because then I go back to the questions, because I, I took a big copy of the questions. And one of the questions that I think leads to this is continually monitor progress towards the goals and outcomes of the strategic plan.
Back to the agenda item.
If we are putting that as a standard agenda item, item, then I think we are meeting that goal.
So.
Is what I'm trying to better understand.
And I would also add, Director Atkinson, that, um, you know, having a goal as a board is to, um, receive. Quarterly updates on academic, um, progress. That's your goal. You want to see this four, you, you want to see those progress indicators in a formal fashion four times a year. And obviously based upon the cadence of the data and what's accessible to us. But that's the goal. Um, and then from there, um, a, and I know some of you are kind of saying, well, we shouldn't be delegating, you know, Michael's work. But you're, you're not delegating my work. You're saying you want to see quarterly updates on the performance of students. Big, broad, okay? Now, the how is now up to me as the superintendent. And based upon when I know we have access to available data, I'm talking with our team to say, okay. In the first quarter, we know we're gonna get these three data sets. The second quarter, we know we're gonna get this data set. We know that the fourth one, you know, like, it won't come until the fourth quarter, which is technically our summer, right? Uh, of when certain data comes and we usually report it to you in the fall or very beginning of the school year. So, so the goal is there. The how, so that's the, that's the what? Uh, that you would like to see. How that, you know, how the, the quarterly come to you will be determined on the knowledge that I have as the superintendent. And our instructional team and, you know, whomever that knows the cadence of the data and will put together that report. Again, something we do, but that's the goal. So that as seats on the board change, that's the goal, right? That you're committed to for the year. And some of these might be ongoing or multi-year goals. Some of these might be a point in time, you know, whatever you all feel as well, but.
Can I, yeah, I mean, I just like, back to just summarizing and bucketing, I, I like that. I think, you know, like, we just set a goal for positive learning environment for, you know, sitting, doing the building reps three to four times a year. We did a community partnerships, I like that, whether it's seven or whatever the number is, fine. Um, and then I think we did an optimizing resource one by, you know, saying we're gonna do a better job at, you know, drafting meeting recaps. For committee meetings and sharing that with the board. I think that, you know, the last one to Director Atkinson's point is around, I think, kind of both standard two and four. On the accountability and, you know, setting high expectations. I would actually love to see that, like, that, um, goal to say, even just getting monthly reports on student performance. And whether that's one month, you know, we look at FastBridge and one month it's truancy rates and one month it's behavior, or one month it's whatever, that's all kind of related. Would that make more sense? Cause I'm not sure I care to get, not that I don't care, but is it valuable for us to get a monthly update or quarterly update on a community partnership goal? Not as much, right? So I guess if you li, made that a more broad goal to say, monthly updates on student performance, you could take that and wherever that fits in the process. Like, FastBridge is ready or truancy is ready.
Agreed, and/or we have to have enough time in between.
Right.
You know, one report to the next to have any marked change, you know, to, to occur as well. So, so, yeah, a, as long as it's broad, because we know the cadence of the data, then we'll just ensure as a team. It's like my, my effort then will be every month, what's, what's the data point that we're gonna bring that we're gonna kind of unpack, you know, with the board?
Cause there's a lot there, right?
Yeah, there's tons.
And if.
I mean, we're doing it constantly as, as an admin team.
Lisa.
Yeah, and so I'm going back again to my questions in here, and it says, a one that I think also aligns with this is. Ensure a high degree of coherence between the strat plan and the skip plans. So we don't really have visibility, I mean, I know we have visibility to the skip plans, but that could be, that could be incorporated in here as well. Of how do we, how do we ensure that there's coherence between the strat plan and the skip plans?
Maybe one month.
Yeah, and that, yeah, that goes into the how, but I'll just answer that question for.
Well, not really, because it's on our board, it's in, it was one of the questions we had to answer.
Right, and, and, and I'm gonna answer the question for you, and that is the template that we shared with you all last year that we just introduced. That's exactly aligned to the strat plan. That's how you know that's going to happen, because every principal, every department lead now has a template. You'll all see it tomorrow morning as well, when I reintroduce it for its second year. So that folks understand, this work of the strat plan is the work that we are becoming. You're not doing this, y- you are this, it's the work. So that's, that's how that gets addressed, I believe.
One of those monthly updates could be a review of those skip plans.
Yeah, that's.
Right, like it falls in that same category.
That could be a monthly update.
Mary.
Can I build on something that, um, Director Bullion said very succinctly earlier on? You know, one of our goals as a board is basically to get out of the way to let everyone else do their job. So in order for those plans to take effect. I don't know if you've ever been in an actual, like, event, like, uh, maybe Director Johnson, you have had, when you've, when you've had like, uh, an event where you have to solve a problem. If your boss is coming in every five minutes going, you have an answer yet? You have an answer yet? You have an answer yet? You're not getting an answer, or you're gonna give the wrong answer, just to get them out of your hair. Our goal is to allow the, the, the administration to have the ability. And to kind of stay, to give them the support and the resources they need, but to let them do their job. Because if we get in their way, they can't do their job. And we are not qualified experts, just like the individuals actually doing the work. When you're dealing with a military crisis, if a general's coming in, or an admiral, or a colonel's coming in and constantly doing this, the team can't do their job. So, and we're kind of in that upper echelon level. So, um, if, 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 if we focus on making sure that we are aware and being, um. Informed at a regular cadence, but not to the point where the process of that monthly informing takes away so many limited resources that we have. That they can't do their job, they can't move ahead. We, we have to consider that as leaders, we have to consider that as, as the bosses of the superintendent.
And I, I would say, I would, I would, I would say that we, we should be flexible enough to allow a pillar pop up as it, as it pops up. I mean, and I'm not, I'm not saying that every month we're rotating these in order, just so that you have to make something up to bring to the board that may or may not. You know, maybe just creating work for you to satisfy our goal.
Right. I think that's so, so important.
But I still think it's important that we.
Yeah.
That that's an expectation, and if, if it's academic excellence and optimizing resources. That that's an expectation and if, if it's academic excellence and optimizing resources every other month for four straight months, that, that's okay. Because that's, that's, that's what the calendar dictated, that's what circumstances dictated. I, I would have no problem with that.
But I thought we were saying like, like I, I think it's a monthly student performance update, like firm academic excellence, like we have a goal for each of the other three areas, so that, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, I don't think it's more work for you, it's stuff you're already doing, right? It's just being transparent to share that.
When you think about like our monthly, like you just think about our, like our, an agenda.
Standing academic student performance update.
And so, and it, to give the freedom, you know, of whatever it might be that he touches on, I think, you know, with this most recent conversation, it made me go back to, we have to be very mindful with you, Dr. Thomas, that I think you said earlier this evening, you know, you don't want to over promise and under deliver. So when, you know, we are having this study session, we're all, you know, you got seven of us throwing out all of these things and then, you know, we're gonna be taking action on this, I think, at the next regular meeting. But we really have to be mindful as a team, what we're doing to our employee and making sure that it is feasible. And I think you really have to, you know, we have, there has to be some kind of a collaboration, you know, taking tonight, sitting with it for a little bit and then being able to say, okay, you know, looking at what this, you know, our, our calendars, like what, how, how would this work? And, okay, you know, just being real mindful and not, not.
Agreed, agreed. And, and again, I've, I've been trying to offer some gentle pushes along the way in this conversation and, you know, I, I will say, I, I applaud all of you for really kind of rolling up your sleeves tonight in a manner that I think is getting you some good progress in, in landing some concrete goals. So just, you know, in, in, in an effort to optimize resource of time tonight, couple of things. I, I would say that one, to that last point that Vice Chair was making, and this came up in the training, so it's not my little mantra here, but at what point does our business become busyness? And, and that's what I want to be guarded for. I changed that the very first year I got here because, well, Chair France, or when, Director France, I think my first mid-year was almost two hours, right, of a presentation.
It was.
And that was busyness, right? That, that was not the business of, of, of the work. And, and so we changed the protocols on how we were doing some things. So I just want to be mindful. Lastly, because it's not necessarily maybe all of your fortes, but we, you know, we've got a couple of staff members, I think we've gotten enough direction from where you all are really wanting to go, that we might be able to help kind of massage the final five yards of how would this look in terms of a measurement, right? So maybe I do that through the chair, if the three were taken care of and now we've got this one that's just kind of in this formation of what's the monthly data point going to be, how do we, how do we codify that, right? So if the board's comfortable with where you, you've arrived tonight, that you're probably 95% there of where you'd like to go, would you like the support of our team to just do that final 5% so that you have something that you could send back out to the board for their consideration and then perhaps one-to-one with you or one-to-one with me actually, to be safer, I don't know, from a serial meeting? Maybe, maybe it's not, but.
I think it's critical to have that step, to have the team, I mean, we are a team, I mean, the seven of us plus the district and you, we, we are the team. And so I, I, I love that suggestion and obviously everyone else can say if they agree or, or not, but I, I, I would love you and the staff to massage and what does this look like and, and is this feasible and, and making sure that the, the business doesn't become, what you said, I, I would really appreciate that.
Is everybody good that we're close enough?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I feel like this is board work, so I personally would suggest one of the board members does it, I'm even happy to do it, or you as a chair. I just, again, would be cognizant of the administrative time unless we feel like we don't have the skillset to like document and put it together. I don't know everyone else's thoughts, but.
Lisa.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we should do it as a board. I mean, if it's even just, you know, us sending in our final thoughts, I mean, if we draft up what we have so far.
Yeah.
And then we can send in our final thoughts to you and, I mean, where we want it, but these are our board goals, we don't need to burden staff with extra.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, Jess Olstead's been, she's been, she's been going, I've heard every bit of it, you know? I'm not, I'm not volunteering anyone over here, but.
No, to that point.
I'm volunteering here too, by the way.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm certainly not trying to take on clerk role here, it was just easier for me to follow some of the conversations tonight by trying to put things into words. So I'm happy to send it to you both to start and then go from there.
Happy to help too.
And massage, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's great, thank you.
All right.
Wonderful.
Are we there?
We're there.
Okay. Then we're good. I appreciate the effort tonight.
That was great.
I'm only an hour behind my predictions, so.
Chair White, I just have a question.
Yes.
For future agenda items, are you keeping a list of things that need to come forward? I was gonna go back and look at some of our school board meetings, I know we changed how we bring future agenda items forward, but do you have a list of things that we still need to address that are outstanding or?
Let me check my list and if you have something that you feel like I've missed, why don't you email me?
Okay, I'll do that, thank you. It's actually, I'm, I'm on Eastern time, so I'm later than y'all, so.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we're good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.